No, don't say that. It was really nice. Heather was excited because she wasn't the only white person there, so. I think there were four of them.
This study session of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:31 PM on Tuesday, February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, in room one thirty-seven of the Edison Building. According to knowledge, this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota people, and we honor the Dakota nations and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. This meeting is being livestreamed, and interested members of the public are welcome and encouraged to view this meeting remotely at youtube.com backslash ISD five thirty-five. Tonight's meeting is also being recorded and will be posted on our YouTube channel following completion of the meeting. The agenda and documents for the meeting are available online at rochesterschools.org backslash assembly. Present at this meeting are school board members, Superintendent Kent Pecel, a non-voting ex officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk, Ms. Lori Sam. Ms. Sam, would you please call the roll?
Director Lawton.
Here.
Director Higginson.
Here.
Director Garcia.
Here.
Vice Chair Martin.
Here.
Vice Chair Marvin.
Here.
Chair.
Vice Chair Wilkman.
Here.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Item two point one is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Will of approval, second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. Item three point one is a focus topic, Superintendent Goals two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four Midyear Conversation. On August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, the School Board approved the Superintendent Goals for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year. We agreed to a midyear conversation on these goals to give the superintendent an opportunity to provide the board and community with an informal update on the progress of meeting those goals. Superintendent Pecel?
Thank you, Attorney Ethan, and Board members. I want to emphasize the word that the chair just used informal. In talking with our Chair and Vice Chair, we decided to keep this conversational and, we hope, relatively brief. But I will just say as a teaser for our next subject, the connection between what I'm going to talk about now in terms of my own work this year is intimately connected to what we're going to dive deeply into next, which is, I think, compared to the way change is implemented in most, most school districts around the country, a dramatic departure from the way initiatives are implement, uh, implemented and we seek to improve outcomes. And so I think what we're about to hear colleagues describe around literacy and multi-tiered systems of support, I hope over time will characterize everything we do. And right now, as I think you'll see when we turn to that presentation, it is a wonderful positive outlier. And in the meantime, we're moving forward, but not with quite the level of planfulness and execution that you're going to get a glimpse of in a moment. So with that said, as Board members will recall, we're trying something somewhat unusual for at least school districts in Minnesota, but I think you can fairly say that beyond with my goals and my evaluation insofar as it has three core components. The first of which is how well am I leading implementation of our strategic plan? The second of which is how effectively am I serving as a leader against a set of competencies that were jointly developed by the School Boards Association and the School Administrators Association? And the third is what are our outcomes? What are the connections? The constant challenge, and we saw this as you conducted my last evaluation last summer, but also I think it's fair to say the summer before, is that even though the job of superintendent is an important one and one that I'm very honored to have, the distance between what I do and what happens in a classroom across the school district is sometimes long. And so the connection between what we do here in the Edison Building and what ultimately matters the most, which is what happens in that classroom or in the other places where we interface with families and students, is oftentimes diffuse and remote. And so I'm excited that I have goals and that I'm, you're holding me accountable for not just the implementation of our strategic plan, but also for how I work as a leader and for our, our outcomes. But there's a lot of dots between where I sit and where those things happen. And that's a constant challenge for me as I sat back and thought about this brief update for you today. So to start out with the strategic plan implementation, as you all know that building blocks graphic very well, our strategic plan is rolling out in three phases over the course of three years. In Wave One, we launched the heaviest lift of a number of those strategies. Wave Two got underway the following year, and we're now in the final design phase of the last new initiatives that will be rolling out in the year ahead. And so I'm going to put those into two food groups, the work that is already underway in implementation and the work that this year is in design, and give you a very brief update because you're getting deep updates on this work over the course of the two thousand and twenty-four, um, School Board Calendar. So to look at the component number one, your goal that we set was that seventy percent of the initiatives, and initiatives in our framework are very defined things, like you can look and see what an initiative is. It says Initiative One, Initiative Two, so that term is not a loose one. Seventy percent of the initiatives in our District-wide Initiatives for System Change, or DISCs, are implemented on time and effectively. And I will say, having spent time over the last couple of days in preparation for this, reviewing what were those initiatives and what am I hearing from Cabinet members and others about where we are, we were extremely ambitious, and the number of things we put underway this year, all of which I think are the right work, were very, very ambitious. And so achieving that seventy percent goal is, it, it's, it's, it's going to be a stretch, for sure. It's definitely a stretch goal. To just briefly touch on those, because as I said, we'll have many more opportunities to dig deeply into them. Every school in the district has a deeper learning team. It is primarily teachers, but not only teachers. It is very much teacher energy and teacher-led, and they are busy taking the framework of mastery, identity, and creativity that came from Jal Mada's research at Harvard, as well as some enablers of environments in which those three things can come to life. And they're working to the, to define them in their local context and bringing forward exemplars of deeper learning. Some of those are things that have been happening in the schools for many years, and others are very new things that they are actually leaning into. And I'd say on the whole, the teams have got some good energy and traction. And one of the things, we actually saw this with Director Cook's question last week about our Advanced Learning Services, one of the tensions and questions is where do we go from these teams? And the design of the project is actually to spend two years defining deeper learning and next year measuring deeper learning. But one of the questions that is starting to be asked, and I think it's a sign of progress, is how do we take it beyond the team and how do we integrate it into everything we do? We want to define what it is before we begin to expand it, so I think it's a good problem to have. Multi-tiered system of supports is a pyramid framework that you all have come to know well with a Tier One at the base that should serve the vast majority of kids, Tier Two for kids who need somewhat additional support, and Tier Three with intensive support. We are focusing that work on literacy right now. We definitely, ahead of us, have heavy lifting in mathematics and in mental health using that framework. But as we're going to hear about in a moment, literacy for lots of reasons is our focus. I will say if we were ambitious across all of those goals, MTSS is the area in which we were most ambitious, which is striking to me now as I look at it mid-year, because in the summer when we planned the year, we pulled back a lot. There are a lot of other things that we are not undertaking right now, like, for instance, strengthening Tier One curriculum in literacy at the high school level. We are not undertaking that work by design. We are just putting in place teams and measures at the high school level. We haven't really begun to figure out the work, as Director Marvin has pointed out, of how do high school English teachers or someone teach reading to struggling readers in the high school? So there was a lot we didn't put in the plan for this year, and yet the plan as it exists is, uh, is stretching folks. And I'm hearing more and more from classroom teachers and administrators that people are bought in, people see the promise of that framework, and are especially really eager for support on the interventions. When you identify a kid who is not reading well, what are the supports in your classroom? What are the broader supports beyond it? So that is definitely a glass half-full in the sense that the framework and measurement is focusing us on the kids who need the support, but there's a strong capacity issue that we're working on. Restorative practice, we have some teams and, and, uh, working in a subset. All the rest of these are in a subset of our schools, and I'll move quickly through them in the interest of time. With restorative practice, we really have begun the work, we're find, trying to make sure the adults actually know how to think and act in a restorative frame, and not just how you participate in a circle, but how you build community that then, if it's disrupted, can and should be restored. And so that work is moving forward. It is by and large, and I'm generalizing here in the interest of time, it is by and large proceeding separately from our efforts to get tight and have effective disciplinary policies. And they're different. You know, one is a consequence and one is about building community and repairing things. We know over time, or I believe over time, those two need to come more closely together. So restorative practice is not one train and school discipline is not another, but they come together and so that the processes of discipline are restorative in and of themselves. So that's something that I think is work ahead of us, and that'll be an update on the Board's agenda. Number four, school start times, as you know, shifted over the course of this year from being just about school start times to being the attendance options redesign that the Board approved earlier in the fall. And we are deep in the implementation of that strategy right now. We have an update for you coming up on the Board Agenda. I'd say on the whole, things are proceeding at a good pace. We are getting word back from families about what their plans are going to be for next year. We have schools and programs that are going to be shifting buildings or configurations, beginning to work together toward that end. And we are beginning to think about those redrawn attendance boundaries and transportation routes that have to be ready by next fall. And so tons of change. We had a, a long meeting today to make sure that we were actually connecting the dots across all of those areas of change. So that, for example, the work that's happening with moving the Spanish immersion program at the elementary level into Riverside is also proceeding in tandem with thinking about our newcomers program, for instance, which will also be expanding. They're very different. They're both about languages other than, than English, but they also both involve attendance choices and families. One interesting thing that has started to become a subject of discussion in the Riverside community is will families whose first language is Spanish who live near that school begin to choose the Spanish immersion program, which is an interesting possibility that wasn't available to them nearby in, before. So some things that were not necessarily anticipated in the core plan are starting to emerge. No red flags, I'm happy to say, just yet. The community partnerships work is proceeding as well, and Amy and Lita Casper are leading that work. We're developing a partnerships toolkit that we would be able to share with organizations, either at the school level or district level that want to partner with RPS. And we are very close to what I think, Amy, we've called the stewards, is the term we finally landed on. We are very close to identifying a single point of contact within the district for our key strategic partners like NAACP or Mayo Clinic, there are, there are many others that you know well, that will always be charged with being sure everything that's happening in RPS this person is aware of and connecting the dots between, and they are making sure we are aware of the needs and priority of those partner organizations. And so that we are actually not just saying, what have you done for us lately? But we are actually also saying, what are your priorities? And so, you know, many of our partnerships have lots of people involved at the school and district levels. We want that to continue. But since I've been in Rochester at least, we've gotten extensive feedback, like, hey, are you guys talking to each other? Is, is RPS networked across all of the ambitious things that are going on? So we want to make sure that we are a, a strategic partner where we do connect the dots across our work. In terms of leadership development, there's two things that are, uh, happening that are really important. We have had Jackie and Eric Johnson and a team working to define a framework for principal leadership and the way we will begin to evaluate and support principals in that framework. It comes from a search done at the University of Washington, has a strong equity emphasis around leadership and also instructional best practices, and so that's happening. And then we have got a new cohort going through the Minnesota Principals Academy who are all engaged in that really rich curriculum and, and working on those things. And then also, I should probably say a third, it's, it's another thing that wasn't necessarily anticipated in the design of the strategy, but we have quite a few teachers and other staff who are earning administrative licenses who Jackie and Eric and the team have begun to develop through having them substitute for administrators when they are not there. And so they're, they're kind of becoming a, I don't know if I want to say a bench or a farm team, but a cultivation of future leaders in RPS, which is really exciting. The post-secondary pathways work is another one of those that's extremely complex and ambitious, making a lot of progress. Will and Heather Hogan and Alex Agano, working in particular with our school counselors. A major emphasis has been to put counselors at the center of that work, understanding that they also have many other critical, important roles. So we've been working with a veteran counselor from Chicago Public Schools who was central to the extraordinary gains that they made over twenty years there in not just high school graduation rates, but post-secondary enrollment and attainment rates for all kids, but in particular low-income kids and students of color. And she has completed interviews with all of our counselors and given us very rich feedback about the supports they need and the issues that they see. So the team is beginning to work on that. And then you also saw a glimpse of our new software platform that we're doing a soft launch of this spring called Zello that will kind of be the electronic Main Street of that work and that the people that I talked to who are beginning to touch that platform are really excited about. One of the challenges that we have lying ahead, and this is something that by design we're not grappling with this year, is how do we find the time when students will engage with that post-secondary career planning in a sustained, meaningful way? Because in the vast majority of our schools, we don't have that right now, whether it would be embedded in a class or an advisory structure. And so that is work that for sure lies ahead of us in the next couple of years. Because if we don't make that dedicated time and have the dedicated staff who walks students through those processes, we won't get to the all-kids component of that strategy. Our student mental health process, as you will hear in an upcoming update, is also moving forward on the many findings that came out of the year-long self-assessment that we did called the SHAPE Assessment. And one of the things that is, uh, most exciting this year is we have piloted two separate screening tools that are validated tools for identifying kids who are struggling with, for instance, anxiety, depression, maybe suicidal ideation. Three hundred students participated in the first pilot. Three hundred are going to be participating in a second administration. And the goal of that is to see what are the screeners telling us about student needs? What are they telling us about the interventions that our own staff are able to put in place in school, but that also the referrals we can put in place with school-linked mental health providers? And so Connie Grimshut and Sarah Clark will be doing, here to do an update on that work. One of the things that I know the Board has talked about that was frankly a surprise to me as someone who doesn't have a background in mental health, is that when you screen and you identify need, you're obligated to serve. And so even with that relatively small initial screening of three hundred kids, we've identified kids who are otherwise not being connected to supports, and I'm pleased to say the team has been able to do that. One of, again, the sources of tension is going forward when we want to administer screeners on a broader scale. How will we meet that need? We also have, not surprisingly, and again, you'll hear more about this from our leaders when they come, we've encountered some reluctance on the part of parenting adults and caregivers and sometimes students themselves to participate in the screening. And we haven't done a lot of education or norm-building around why it's okay to take a screener, but we have encountered some, I don't want my kid to do that, or I don't want to do that. So we know that there's going to be an education component of that work that has to come. And we're thinking a lot about like, when and how are you even creating that opportunity for someone to think about doing one of the two? And then with our family engagement work, that's proceeding, again, like all of the numbers three to through nine in a subset of our schools that were kind of early adopters, and it really has two components. The first is integrating the research that Dr. Karen Map, also at Harvard, has done on family engagement into the school-wide work with parents and caregivers and families. That's called the Dual Capacity Framework, and so there's been mostly learning on the part of staff about what that framework is. Then I'm also really excited that our new CAPE program, and I'm going to get the acronym wrong, Connect, what is it? It's C-A-P-E.
Caregivers.
Caregivers and parents.
Empowerment.
Empowerment, caregiver and parent empowerment. You know, it's the Rochester term. I can remember CAPE, so that's good news. It's the Rochester term for the Parent Institute for Quality Education Program, and we've been piloting two cohorts, one at Gage and one with the American Union Parent Advisory Committee and Native American community more broadly. They're early, and now we have some other cohorts moving forward, and so it's been very exciting to hear about the early engagement of families. The sessions have generally begun with a meal. We've had childcare, and then the parents have gone into that session to walk through the curriculum that you got a brief glimpse of from Will not too long ago. So that took longer than it's going to take to do this next piece. Here are the five efforts that are in design phase this year. The funding redesign, we're now, the word redesign, I'm a little worried, has been too used too often. So we've been calling it rethinking funding. But we have done a, John and Andy and Denise have done a deep dive into the current state. How are we actually using our general fund dollars, our compensatory ed dollars, our achievement integration dollars, our literacy aid? And what do we know about how those funds flow to the building level and how they're used? And what do we know about how resources are allocated centrally here? So we're kind of, we're not kind of, we're finishing that initial, uh, internal dive into our own current strategies. We are looking for a technical assistance partner who has a lot of experience in school funding and staffing designed to guide us in that, because this has been going on for decades to varying degrees of success. It's highly complex and highly technical. And so we have identified two, um, organizations that we think are potentially a really good fit for this work, and so we are going to be making that decision over the next couple of weeks. And we'll look forward to having you meet whichever one is going to be helping guide us in the same way that kind of the Center for Applied Research and Educational Improvement at the University of Minnesota has helped guide us through the MTSS work. We need a partner who has both experience and also technical expertise, partly because we don't want to reinvent the wheel, because there have been a lot of hard lessons learned about this over time. The other thing I will just say is that John and Andy and Denise and everyone on their team all have day jobs. And so if we don't have any additional capacity, this, this work is not going to happen. As you know, our hope is that you will make decisions in November of two thousand and twenty-four on a broad strategy for, uh, funding and staffing in ways that are both tied to our strategic plan and that provide more flexibility at the school level and that the implementation of that might follow over multiple years. So that is a big decision that will be a big subject of your work, um, over the course of the fall. What we called staff recruitment in our initial plans for the year has truly exploded in a good way to involve working groups. I'm going to even make sure that I don't. Carl Barkin is doing a great job riding this dragon because it has become a really good dragon. We have got seven different teams that are out and are deeply engaged in what we have come to call the people strategy, because it's way beyond recruitment. And it's about how do we support, recruit, and develop our staff to be the best educators, the best ESPs, the best, um, food service workers, whatever their role is, well, we think in, in the world, and make sure that they are both professionally satisfied and continually developed. So we have a working, we have a recruitment working group. That was always key. But as we got into the design of that strategy, we also have an application and selection working group. What is your application process? One of the things we've learned is that we would benefit from a better process of finding our employees, and our employees would benefit from a better process of examining us, because we are also being evaluated as a new teacher, for instance, decides what district they might want to work on. Then we have an induction group that is looking at how do we support new staff in every area, not just in terms of training about their job, but in terms of welcoming to the organization and inclusion and culture. We have an evaluation group that is looking at how we evaluate employees. Interestingly, that group has become, um, extremely diverse in terms of the, um, job categories that it's looking at. I was meeting with all of our custodians out at Dakota, and it was just a free-flowing conversation. And one of the most interesting comments was, somebody raised their hand and said, you know, after we get hired, we never get evaluated, and we don't know what's good and what's good enough. And we would welcome that, actually. We'd like to know what we can do better. There's supervision, but it's different than the evaluation. So we've got custodians and staff working on that group. Then we have a recognition working group. We know we don't do as much as we should and want to around recognizing the contributions, the hard work, the innovation of our staff. We have a staff wellness and mental health working group that is looking at how do we support staff well-being? In some ways, a counterpart to the work we did last year with student mental health and well-being, but it's, of course, different, because these are professionals and adults and everything from our employee assistance group to things like affinity groups, like our Employees of Color Resource Group that's been so successful. Do we need some others that are able to support staff in different, with different needs? And then finally, an exit interviews group. What do we know about when people leave us? How do we rigorously get feedback, good, bad, and ugly, about someone's experience when they are leaving Rochester Public Schools? So those are all groups that are now in that, what we call that, people strategy, formerly staff recruitment. Point three is actually one that is included in my goals because it's in the strategic plan. But as I was preparing this, it's pretty clear to me that I think I need to talk with our Chair and Vice Chair about the inclusion of number three, which is really the Board's process to review and strengthen our policies through the lens of equity as one of my goals. I see my role more as supporting the Board in that effort than in providing the same kind of leadership. And certainly, I'm there on the Policy Committee. Take that very seriously. Cabinet members do too. But that's one that, as I looked at it, and I thought, how would I evaluate my role in that one? It, it, it might be one where we want to think a little differently about it as part of, part of my goals and evaluation. I certainly can say, and Board members who are on the Policy Committee know, it's happening. And we are, every time we approach a policy, looking at it through the lens of students and families and staff, especially from historically marginalized communities. But it's definitely not a bus that I'm driving. I think appropriately so. The youth voice and leadership were the terms we were using when we did my plan. But through the work that Sarah Louise Henry is doing in leading that design phase and collaborating collaboration with Will and others, we've now decided to use the term youth empowerment because it, it includes both youth voice and youth leadership. It's shorter, but it also fits more with what we're hearing. Well, the first phase of that work that Sarah Louise is leading with the team is focusing on high school, which was somewhat reluctant because we know the need is just as big in middle school and even in elementary school. But we know high school kids and middle school kids, as we see every month at Student School Board, are very different. And so the first wave of the work is focusing on high school. And the first stage is also diagnostic. What currently is happening to promote youth engagement? What currently is getting the way of youth engagement? And that process will be moving into the visioning phase and what doesn't exist that we want to build over the coming years. So that also is on your school board agenda coming up. And we have shifted, Sarah Louise, of course, is a, is an amazing member of the team. She was straddling the divide between the Office of Academics and the Office of Equity and Engagement. She's now still working with everybody in academics, but is housed within Equity and Engagement. And we've put youth empowerment in her title, to be really clear. And so I'm really looking forward to that update for the board. And then finally, transportation to early childhood education. In Dialogue, and you got a great overview from our director, Erica Schumacher, at the last board meeting. Through Dialogue, we really concluded that in the near term, given resource constraints, both in the public sector, in the private sector, expanding transportation services to early childhood education in Rochester, while an urgent need, is not a realistic strategy for us right now. Most of those very young children ride vans. They're very, very expensive. We sometimes, as within our school readiness funding stream, have a funding stream to support that, but in many cases, we don't. And so that's why one of the proposals we put before you in the attendance option redesign would move our programming into Pinewood, allow us to expand the number. We'll have an update on the cost of that move for you at, in the coming board meetings, but it's something we're very actively working on. And as you know, we also looked at expanding the number of early childhood slots we can offer at Hoover. We pulled back from that because it became clear that the implications for families that have seen Churchill and Hoover as a continuum were problematic to figure it out short-term. But we know the need is also huge in that part of the city. And so I think, I think we're still making a lot of progress in that area, but it's pivoted from having more buses and vans driving little kids to our programming to expanding the number of slots that we have available in different areas of the city. So one of those, one of those things that's happened in the course of our work. Final component of my evaluation is how I am performing against the competencies of the leadership framework that MSBA and MAS A developed. And as you will remember, it's a very long framework, and there's lots and lots of bullets. I'm just going to pick kind of one issue either of progress or frankly concerned to briefly highlight. Obviously, when we get to the summer, I'll do a detailed self-evaluation, and you will use this framework to do an evaluation as well. In the area of governance, which is the first part of the MSBA framework, one of the key priorities is goals and strategic plan. And I will say that, given everything that has been happening in our district, the constant tension for me, this again is about me as opposed to the system, my constant tension is finding the, the time and the bandwidth to focus on the strategic plan and those strategic issues. Because the old cliche of the urgent drives out the important continues to be my daily reality, and I have got to find ways, and you know, the cabinet members are invaluable in this, but got to find ways to be sure that, that question of where are we in these major transformative initiatives stays a major part of what I'm focused on. Because frankly, I could completely lose that and still be working very, very hard and answering every email and doing those things. So in the area of the, the governance piece, I think that's the biggest tension that I'm experiencing right now. And it's more of a tension than it was even the previous two years as the strategic plan moved from being kind of a planning thing into implementation. It's a challenge for me to stay as involved without being kind of in the weeds. Terms of finance, the issue there I would highlight, won't be a surprise to any of you, our narrow defeat of the levy in November and the upcoming recommendation I'll make to you to put another one has been a continual focus of my leadership. I have thought again and again, and look forward maybe in the evaluation to talking about some of the, the lessons that I've taken from our November referendum, November 2023, and both how our district strategy went. I know we're going to get into that very soon. But also how my own efforts were successful and might have been different. But especially now going into what I'm going to recommend to you be another referendum, what, how should I spend my time? What should my role be? I think a lot of good things happened, but I think I've seen some things that I would definitely do differently going forward. So in the area of finance, I've obviously continued to work closely with John and others on our budget development, but that has been a particular focus of my work, or it is here at mid-year. In terms of community and community relation, communication, community of relationships, that also actually relates to the levy that narrow, the referendum that narrowly failed in October. Because that, I think, one of the many good things that came out of that for me was I got much more connected to many of our community organizations and school communities because it was a very personal interaction for me. I mean, I met with one-on-one, small groups, restaurants, things. One of the drawbacks of that was that, that didn't amount to that many people over five months, but it was great to begin to have those connections. And, and it was not something I did as much in my first two years here. So I learned a lot. I got to know Rochester much better. I think people who I had that opportunity with got to know me. It obviously wasn't the most effective referendum communication strategy, but it was highly effective for me in terms of having that connection. And I want to make sure that, that we sustain that. In the school district operations piece, the one I would highlight there is the work on transportation that we did in the attendance options redesign. We definitely still, you made a difficult decision, but I think we landed in a place that balances the competing priorities of new start times and tight budgets about as well as we could have balanced them. And I've been incredibly fortunate to work not only, of course, with John in this, but I think we all know that Jeff Kappers is going to be moving into a well-deserved retirement not too long from now. And I will just say that the opportunity to work with Jeff to frankly address some things that he has seen needed change for decades has been really rewarding. And that I'm confident he will be leaving our district in a dramatically better place when he does get to that point. But that's taken a ton of my time because that's one of those things where the devil is all in the details. You can't just have a big vision. It all comes down to, as we heard and from the emails, where you're drawing a line on the attendance boundary. So that was a big thing. With human resources, a huge focus of my time has been negotiations with our bargaining groups. I've personally sat in on every negotiation since I've been in RPS. That has been great in many ways. I wanted to really build positive relationships with those groups. I've learned a lot. I've gotten to know individuals. It also has taken an extraordinary amount of time. Many superintendents don't sit in on all negotiations. Of course, I'm going to continue to finish the three negotiations we're in right now with our Rochester Education Association, our Rochester Principals Association, and our new Rochester Administrators Association. One of the things I've talked a bit about with our chair and vice chair is, should I continue to do that? I, I see a tension there. I think it's been really good. It also is, it, it directly takes away from time I'm in schools, time I'm with community, time I'm doing some of these other things. But I worry about not being there. So it's something to think about. I think it's been very productive, but it's, it's been a huge, huge amount of time. In terms of teaching and learning, I would say that the work we're going to hear about in a moment, in terms of our academic strategy generally and our rollout of the REED Act, has been a significant focus of my time thus far this year. In part, that's, of course, because Dr. Obamu made the decision to resign and is doing other things up in the city. So I'm stepping in in a different way. But it's also because, like as Director Cook, you've often pointed out, there's nothing more important to this strategy than our early literacy work. And so I think even when FA was here, I was getting very directly engaged in it. And I think that has been highly productive for me. And I think what you're going to hear about now in a moment from Gretchen and Heather and Denise is our implementation of a new state law and mandate. What we're building, I believe, through the REED Act work is our approach to improving teaching and learning in all subject areas. And so we're beginning to think through, how do we do professional development? How do we adopt, review and adopt curricula? How do we tie assessment to intervention? So I think that the work I've, time I've spent on the literacy work is time well-spent because it's, it's going to be relevant for the mathematics work and for the other work that we have going forward. I don't anticipate being as directly involved in subsequent efforts, but I, I think it's been a really good, I heard a metaphor from Jel Fest, Elstad, the superintendent of Otana, that I think applies to superintendents and maybe board members too. There's something Jeff called the crop dusting approach, which is that you know your role is up here, but to understand the substance, you got to go down here. But then you don't stay down here because that's not where you're needed. You go back up because when boards or superintendents are there too involved in the operational decisions, we're not doing this. But it also doesn't serve well if you don't get down there and ask some of those nuts and bolts issues. So I think I've had kind of that, that crop dusting experience with the REED Act work that we're going to hear about in a moment. And then the final point I would make in the MSBA framework, oh no, there's, there's two more, sorry. The, in the student support category, the biggest area that I would say is not a major part of our strategic plan, and it has not been a focus of my work, so I'm highlighting a gap here, is student attendance. The single biggest thing that I think in retrospect didn't emerge through our year-long planning process for the strategic plan was an attendance strategy. And in retrospect, that's maybe not surprising, given that we were not only coming out of the pandemic, we were still in it. You know, we still went to distance learning for two weeks because we couldn't staff our schools. So I think getting kids to school and to class was not the priority then, that it's emerging to me now is needed. And there are a lot of things that we can see kind of from research and other districts, excuse me, that can be done around attendance, but we do have a subset of our students that are not getting to school or not getting there as frequently. And then we do have a subset that are in our buildings but not getting to class. I don't mean to suggest it's, it's the norm, but it's definitely something that I think needs increased attention going forward. It's also something that historically has not just been the responsibility of school districts, that often county attorneys, social services, sometimes law enforcement, historically have had a role in attendance. A lot of that stopped during the pandemic, not just in Rochester and Olmsted County, but around the country. And of course, I think we would want to take a positive, restorative approach to that, not a punitive one. But that is the biggest area, I think, that I know is not a focus of, of my time, or by extension, our time at least at the central office level, that I think it probably merits going forward. And then finally, in terms of the ethical and inclusive leadership piece, I think that the, 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 all of the components of that are really critical. But the one that I would probably highlight has been a, a focus through this year is the one on professional practice. And that's coming through the development of our people strategy and also in an interesting way through our negotiations. How do we really say that in Rochester Public Schools, whatever your role is, the ethics, the integrity, the professional expectations of whether you're a counselor, a teacher, a principal, are what we want to bake into our work such that, that this is a place where people, and I think it is, take their professional practice deeply seriously, and we support them in continually improving that professional practice? So that, you know, in a simplistic soundbite, it's not just a job, that it really is a practice and that we're treating all of our team members with the respect they deserve as professional, not necessarily using that in a term to refer to just one type of job, but all of the, all the work that we're doing. And so that's been something that has been a continuing priority. And one of the things that sometimes has very clear programmatic and organizational implications, like how you deal with a disciplinary issue, and do you give the employee the benefit of the doubt, and do you conduct an investigation before you take a step? It also sometimes is interpersonal. I was with a couple of cabinet members last week, and we were meeting with the representatives of our clerical union. And one of them said, partly jokingly, but I actually, there was a sincerity, she said, you know, even if you never take any of these points that we're sharing, it's incredibly validating to have you sit here for more than an hour and hear about what it's like to be an office manager and what it's like to be a receptionist. And, and of course, she really did want us to take seriously what she was saying, and we do. But it was a reminder for me of the fact that, this was in our meet and confer meeting every month, they come with a set of things, and some of them are very macro and some of them are very micro. I mentioned that I'm wondering if I should continue to participate in all of the negotiation sessions, which are multi-multi-meeting and usually multi-months. There's no question I will continue to participate in all the meet and confer sessions because those are very impactful opportunities with every one of our groups to hear how their members are doing. And we've tried to integrate that idea of, well, what do you think your group needs to succeed? Like what are, what are the professional practices that you think are critical, or what does your, your field? One of the things that's been really cool about having Alex Agano as our lead counselor now is that in the world, and Will's provided really great leadership on this, counselors are feeling empowered and called to integrate best practices from their national association into our work. So ASCA, the American School Counselors Association, has become a key touchstone for what they're doing. And we're using some of our resources to send a pretty good-sized group to their national conference this summer. And I think it's a great use of those dollars because we haven't been, as a district, particularly connected to ASCA for a long time. And they're feeling very connected to their national association, which is a very progressive, you know, thoughtful organization that takes improving school counseling as its mission, not just the interests of counselors, though those are related. So that is the walkthrough, those three areas. I believe, Madam Chair, that that covers the core of where we are and that, as you know, we have got our sessions on the agenda in the summer for, oh, that's right. Sorry, there's three outcomes. I want to skip the outcomes. I will be brief here because there, I think it's touched on by, each of these is related to what I just said. The outcome on the deeper learning teams is really focused on educator experience. And so at the end of this year, we want the members of those teams, which, as I mentioned, exist in every school at a very high level, to say, yes, I understand this framework and I can integrate it into my teaching. So that's goal number one. I think we have a solid chance. Eighty-five percent is very high now that I look at that percentage, but I think that one is moving. For MTSS, the goal was two point five, between grades two to five, a bump of three point five percentage points on the FastBridge assessment. This is a longer discussion for us as we get into the updates on literacy. We're not unique in Minnesota at all in using FastBridge to describe progress in literacy. And it's a validated tool, and so it's not inappropriate, but it is not tightly designed for that purpose. It's a screener. So it is designed to identify an individual kid who may need further diagnosis and intervention. And the way we wrote this goal almost reads like an MCA score, which is designed, we can have a different discussion of whether it's a good idea, as a summative assessment of learning. But FastBridge is very short by design because you don't want the kid to spend a bunch of time taking a test. You want to identify the need so you can begin to provide instruction. And because FastBridge is one of the three identified screeners for early literacy in Minnesota, and because next year, we and every other district are going to need to send parents notice of their student's FastBridge score if they're not on track, FastBridge is going to get a lot of attention. And I think people are going to start to look at it saying, my kid can't read if they're at a certain level. So there's a lot of education that has to be done by, about what FastBridge is and isn't. I think it's going to be, it's a good goal. It's going to be a good goal to look at. But part of the tension is, it is a tool that is identified to, that is intended to identify the need for additional learning and support as opposed to the effectiveness of the previous teaching. And we've written a goal here that is more like it's, it's evaluative. So I think, just wanted to mention that as we're going. So I think, just wanted to mention that as we're going. We had some schools that met that standard last year, most did not, so it's ambitious for us to see that, that level of improvement. And then in restorative practice, the goal was to increase the number of Level II disciplinary infractions, so some type of disruption to the unlearning environment, behavior that would be fighting that doesn't result to the level of suspension. And the goal was to reduce that by a statistically significant amount. This is another goal that, knowing what I know now, I might have written differently because in focusing on Level II infractions, the theory was these are the lower-level disciplinary concerns that lead to more serious stuff. But measuring them exactly the same across the district is and will always be a challenge. And in many respects, the Level II is less concerning to me, though it's concerning, than suspension, which is the loss of learning time. So a Level II is never, were I to write this goal now, I would have focused it on reducing suspensions as opposed to Level IIs. I will tell you, without getting too far into the data that we'll be sharing with you later in the year, year-to-date, our Level IIs are up, our suspensions are down. And understanding why that might be happening has been a subject of our discussions with buildings. There's no simple answer and each building is different, but one possibility, and they're not down just, I should say, at elementary where the state has mandated they go down, they're down at secondary as well, so that's good news. It could be that schools are taking earlier action around less serious forms of disruption and either therefore needing to or choosing to suspend significantly less frequently. So that's one of the goals there that I think I might have framed differently at the beginning of the year, but we can continue that conversation over, over the next few months. And then finally, post-secondary pathways. That's one that aims to continue the progress, the significant progress that we made in our high school graduation rates last year. That was really, really good progress, and sustaining really good progress is always just mathematically hard because your rate of gain was strong, and so it's, can be a challenge, but I think that remains a good goal for us to move forward. One of the things that is coming out of some of the discussions we're having around that goal is the possibility of having, next year, a very proactive and strong focus on keeping kids on track in ninth grade. That when a student does not pass a class, or has 10 or 15 days absent, or gets a disciplinary referral in ninth grade, it can put in place a process of disengagement or being identified as a quote-unquote troublemaker, however you want to frame it, that can have really problematic impacts on their chance for later success in high school and even graduation. And so we're beginning to talk with teams at all of our schools about a major effort starting next year that would be focused on high school graduation and post-secondary pathways, but have a new emphasis on our ninth graders as a way to start intervening more early. So something that's not underway right now, but the discussion this year is leading to, I think, a pretty decent amount of energy about potentially having that as a focus next year. And I believe now, if I get it wrong, there we go. That's my report.
Everybody take the deep breath, including you.
Thank you.
Board members, any questions or comments?
I just have one comment.
Director Barlow.
In regards to leadership component, goal number one, Initiative Seven, today I participated in a family engagement meeting, and Alex, as well as Jennifer Thurston, they presented in terms of the counselors, and they spoke favorably regarding the use of Zello and the potential they envisioned. And I just thought it flows perfectly with what you've shared and the fact that it is, in terms of the fill application occurring, and the counselors seemingly are very excited about this particular tool. Want to give a quick shout-out to Will, having maybe identified Zello, brought it to the districts aware, and I don't know if you did or not.
It was a team effort.
Team effort, of course, okay. But it's working. And I also will look forward to hearing how our elementary, that's our elementary component as well. But did want to write that feedback to you.
Great. Thanks. Well, I want to remind everybody, both board members and everybody watching, that, you know, I think when we first did the strategic plan, one of the reasons we were excited that we were doing it is that previous ones had been developed and stayed on the shelf. And we did have people who asked us the question when they saw how ambitious it was. How are you going to get all of this done? And I think the one piece, aside from the fact that you can give us a little equate about all of the work that's being done, and the fact that you, when we developed the draft of the ABCD, already have chosen the dates for this upcoming year, for every one of these goals, every one of these components of the strategic plan, and when they're going to be presented to the board. So not only can our community hear the work that's being done, they can look ahead and see when the next milestone of a report. And we've never seen that kind of organization or planning, or planned fullness in the time that I've been working with the board, so I really appreciate that. I know that, as you've already said, some of the dates have changed, priorities get shifted, so, and we are trying to inform the board members as those things happen so that you know when things are happening, but they're still all in the scope of the calendar for the year. So I think that's important to recognize that it's, you're hearing about them tonight and that you will be hearing about them then individually in detailed presentations like we saw last week with early childhood and et cetera. So I really appreciate that. Director Barlow.
Yeah, I think one of the things, one of the things I really appreciate in order for any of this to work is the intentionality. Everything has a purpose and a reason, and we really saw that when we were developing the strategic plan. And as Chair Nathan said, in past years, the issues have been, how do we carry this out? And so you're certainly taking it way past just the intentionality, but also providing the structure of the how. And that's something that I don't remember this district having spent a lot of consistent time on in the past, so I really appreciate your leadership in this area.
Director Cook.
So as I was reviewing the materials in the mid-year evaluation, I was thinking back to a time when I was not on the board, but when the process for your selection as superintendent was, was being undertaken. And one of the, one of the priorities that was identified broadly in the community was a superintendent who would be authentically engaged in the community, an effective communicator, and a, someone who would provide transparency to the, to the community so that people would know what was happening and sort of have access at the highest levels of the district administration. I think you have far exceeded most people's imaginations of what that could have entailed. Your community outreach has been extensive, and it's not even really reflected on this, you know, very thorough review of your roles in each element of the strategic plan, but I think is very much valued by our community and is the, creates the conditions for the success that we're all looking forward to. I am very excited by the idea of the outcomes component of the evaluation. I think, one of the reasons that I think goals can be so powerful for, for things like this is because ideally, it's an opportunity to create a rallying cry, to sort of focus the energy and the attention onto whatever means are necessary to achieve that objective. Because from where I sit, I, I am astonished by the amount of firefighting and distraction and just chaos and tumult that you and your team are able to marshal resources around. But the, you know, I think if used well, those goals can become an opportunity to cut through that and say, you know, we can't focus on these other things today, we really have to make sure we're staying on track with these goals that we're gonna, we've decided this is, this is the mission. And so turning to those, to the outcomes component, I know that we've discussed this before, but I was wondering if you could just help to ground, I guess, the board, the community, the rest of the team here, on why it is that we are, that the goal is set at three and a half percent, sort of this, for the literacy on-track goal in particular for the fast-track assessment? And I recognize everything that you just said about the, the use of that fast-track assessment for grades two through five, but when, especially for some of our student subgroups, the, the need to achieve reading proficiency is so significant, and three and a half percent can seem like a not, not very much, not enough, not fast enough. So what, how do we think about that goal, I guess? Or how do you think about it?
Yeah, thank you. It's a great question. As you may recall, when we first started the strategic plan, we agreed to do something that I think was pretty unusual in our field, which is to make statistically significant change our goal across the work, which is to say that whether it was the graduation rate, the test score, the attendance rate, the student response on the survey about how positive they feel about their school, that the data would be almost certainly improving or declining based on actual change as opposed to random fluctuations. So if you gave the test or collected the data, you would say with confidence that this actually was real improvement. When we were doing, so that was the first version. It said increased by statistical significance. That is very hard for people to understand because you have to compute it for every piece of data, because the statistical significance is determined by how many kids are there, what the assessment is. So when we did this one, we said three and a half percent on the FastBridge assessment in literacy in those grades is very likely to be statistically significant. It's a big enough jump. It's not impossible, if the small group was really small, that it might not be, but it's very likely. And so the three and a half was a desire to have my goal be more immediately comprehensible to staff and to others. And the logic of three and a half percent in the aggregate is that in order to hit three and a half percent for all kids, that includes the kids who are quite, who are doing fine. And so the level of improvement from those students who are furthest behind has to be biggest to hit that three and a half percent. So it actually is subsumed in there. As you may recall, our average, our, I have the data in my head because it's there. Our, our graduation rate gain for last year was 2.2% for all kids. It was 8.63% for our Black students, and that contributed to the 2.2% because that jump was so significant. We could, in future years, and we certainly will when we unveil a dashboard in the next year of our own, we could report it at the subcategory level. So we could say for a student, you know, students with disabilities, students, we could set the goal at the subgroup level. And as you saw in the graduation rate goal, that is what we did. We said two subgroups make that gain as opposed to the aggregate. So the logic of the FastBridge is it's happening everywhere, and we, we really didn't want to say this one group is more important to the superintendent than others in my goal. So that's why, that was the, the logic. And the three and a half percent, thinking that that is almost certainly to be statistically significant, depend, regardless of where the current year's baseline is.
That's very helpful. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Director McLachlan.
I'm struggling a little bit to understand one of my notes that I wrote, so I'll bring this here. Two of the things that I made notes about as we were talking related to MTSS. The first one, I think I can ask you this, but you talked about literacy in terms of MTSS as at the high school level, just providing the structure at this point, did I understand?
Structure, teaming structure, measurement, and a beginning understanding of what constitutes tier one, tier two, and tier three. At the elementary level, it's much easier to say every kid needs to learn this in reading, and then if they don't, this is how you provide them a group in the class, and if they don't, this is how you provide them intensive tutoring. It's much harder in literacy at the high school level to say exactly what tier one is, all kids are getting this, and then what the interventions are. So this year at the high school, we're really trying to get clarity on what are the differences in those levels of intervention? What are the measures? I was talking with one of our veteran English teachers at one of our high schools, and he said for the first time, we know the percentage of kids in this building who are not reading well. And then getting the teams in place, because our high schools have had different teams for many years, but not a good MTSS team is, all the key perspectives, they're looking at that data. So not just teachers, not just counselors. It's cross-cutting so that you have a multi-pronged support for those kids that are needing the tier three interventions, for instance.
Is there anything that you have thought about that the board can do to support you in that particular work?
Ultimately, that I think will be a primary objective of the Rethinking Funding Initiative that will come to you in November in a strategy. I think it's true at elementary too, but at elementary, we have a lot more history with pulling kids into groups, putting specialists into the classroom, pulling a kid out. At the high school level, to do MTSS, I believe is going to require significant change in our schedules and in our staffing structure. And that has to be resourced. Like, high schools can't just pull that out of thin air. One of our high schools, Century High School, happened to have a teacher with a reading license who was teaching something else. And this year, they've had that one individual step aside from the classroom where they were and begin to do direct work with struggling readers. That, that was a big step, it was literally one staff person, and it didn't require changing the schedule, you're pulling kids into that structure, and they're starting small, which makes sense. So I think for the board, as we get into next fall, to be willing to make trade-offs, to make that kind of structure possible will be really, really key. So that's one thing that's a little bit further off. I think it's a great question, and I'll, I'll talk with, you know, our colleagues at the secondary level and think about other ways we can talk about the, the board level involvement. I think what you've already done by saying literacy is a priority, and we have to build a multi-tiered system of supports for all kids in literacy is huge, because actually a little bit to the point Director Cook was making, I was having a meeting with Jackie with one of our secondary principals, actually administrators, and I won't say middle or high school, it's a good meeting, but this work wasn't moving as robustly forward in that school, and that came for notice. One of the things I was able to say is, hey, this is my goal from the board, like this is not negotiable for me. Like, I can't go back in June and say, yeah, we didn't kind of get MTSS really done. Like, I, there was a power kind of what you're saying, of my saying, you know, this is the direction we're heading, it's not negotiable, we put months of analysis into deciding on this direction, and then we've been delivered. So I think, I think you put the train in motion, we're going to have to actually support the reallocation of time and resources to do that in a robust way. And also, very often, this is true at elementary, it's definitely true at high school, where at high school, students who are struggling in reading often have a confluence of other needs. And so social, emotional, relational supports also take time and people. And so coupling that, we haven't done a lot, for instance, at least since I've been here with mentorship. A targeted relational connection tied with good teaching in the content area may be what it's really needed, because if those high school students can't read well enough to access the curriculum that they're being asked to go through, it's almost cruel and unusual punishment to go. unusual punishment to go through content they can't get into because they just don't have those foundational skills. We'll, we'll, we'll take that up, and that's a great question. I'd love to come back to you on that.
And my second part of that kind of relates to the last point you made about the post-secondary pathways and the ninth graders. Are there ways to structure and, you know, with the board's support, focusing that MTSS support on the ninth graders and maybe starting there with a lot of emphasis? And I bring that up only because it's near and dear to my heart because of my work in juvenile court, that I remember seeing ninth graders come in, they were on probation for the first, because of my work, but they'd also have truancy cases. And I would see them come in, in March of the academic year and learn they hadn't been in school, and watch them, and know they're not going to make any progress that year. And that, and then watching them follow that, they were at a deficit after that ninth grade year. It was such a big transition, they weren't in school, and then moving forward in their academics, they were not making it. And I think that's why our, you know, our graduation rates can be impacted by, without having that support in ninth grade when it's such a crucial year.
Absolutely. That's the only way we're gonna, is taking an MTSS approach to that ninth grade on-track work is, is the way to do it systematically. Again, back to the point I was making about the board's decisions next fall about resource allocation. One of the models, and we had a program when I was at Search Institute called the BAR Program. It, it came from St. Louis Park, but we took it and launched it nationally, and it's, it's gone all over the country now. And it starts in ninth grade, and you have to redo the schedule to give teachers time with each other to do what we call risk review, and where they are going through every kid and looking at behavior, attendance, and grades, and coming up with an intervention strategy for every ninth grader that they identify as at risk of not being on track. And what makes BAR powerful in that is that the teachers, you, 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 you expand staffing in ninth grade to make it possible for those teachers to have that time, not only to collaboratively identify the kid, but then to go and intervene. Costs more money. Like, you have to be willing to put more money in ninth grade in the theory that it's going to benefit later in high school. But one of the biggest challenges we would have as a nonprofit trying to get schools to adopt it is you had to make the case to invest more in your ninth grade staffing structure to give those staff the time to work together in that intervention. So that's another example of what it might really take to have that kind of structure. You can still identify the kids. I actually had one of our, members of our research and innovation team use the criteria for ninth grade on-track that came out of decades in Chicago, didn't even adapt it for Rochester, which we would do next fall based on our data. And it immediately identified very specific students in our high schools who otherwise, I think, we might have waited till something happened to identify as needing that intervention. Because when you add those three factors together of you failed a class, you got in some kind of disciplinary infraction, and you have an attendance issue, you suddenly have a group of students who are highly likely to need that support that is very different than if you just looked at any one of those three indicators alone. Because you could just look at discipline rates, you could just look at attendance, you could just look at course grades. When you put the three together, the data shows that's, those kids have a very strong likelihood of not completing high school if we don't intervene, so.
And then actually, one thing else, on a different topic I wanted to mention, maybe more if it come up, but maybe a question. In terms of the transportation for our generous learners at early education, are there ways that the community can support you in that goal? Can you talk about that? If there's, I mean, I was thinking, you know, may a planet can do this fabulous thing. Are there local companies that can do that to help their employees manage their work-life balance better?
Yeah, I appreciate the point. The, the idea of a community strategy around early childcare and early childhood education is coming up, you know, more and more. When I looked at the issue of early childhood transportation with Erica and Amy and the team, the safety of those students, the developmental needs to have hands, handheld and things like that, makes vans the modus operandi, and they're very expensive, at least for us to do well. Now, a community organization or a business might be able to provide transportation with the, without all the requirements that we have.
I was meaning money. Can they give us money?
Oh, can they give us money? I don't know. Really?
Many dollars.
I think that, you know, we know the, we know the investment that that makes, but I don't want to, John, and I'm probably putting you on the spot here, but this is study session. Am I, I'm remembering $14,000 for a van for early, for the year, for early childhood.
Per child, are you saying?
I want to say the, the van route itself is more like 72,000.
No, per kid. For some of our early childhood programs, that the cumulative cost per student.
That probably makes sense if you divide the total cost of what a route costs a daily, every day, back and forth, divided by a certain number of kids in a van.
So, don't use that press without checking. But it's, it's very, it's very significant to do it in the, in the high-quality way that, you know, we do it. But I, I, thank you for clarifying that. I think there's few investments that pay the kind of dividends like that, and we know in Rochester, transportation continues to be the bearer. I'm excited about our idea of expanding offerings in various parts of the city. That's obviously a multi-year strategy, but we also know we can't have a early childhood program on every block. So the transportation piece is definitely something to come back to. I was very surprised by the cost of appropriate early childhood transportation when we, when we started to look at it through this process.
So I'd like to just make a couple of points about, starting with the budget, that ultimately it's a moral document in terms of what we value. And the hardest part, I think, whenever we go through budget reductions is saying no to good things. And it's very hard to communicate that to people who, their thing is what they do and why you have to say no to it. So that kind of ties in with when I was a kid and my mother said to me, you can always use me as a scapegoat. You know, so my friends would say, oh, let's go this, do this and this and this. Oh my God, my mother would kill me. We can't do this. I can't do this. So I can't speak for my other colleagues on the board, but I would hope that whenever you need to use us as your scapegoat, as you kind of reiterated a few minutes ago, would be to say what you say, this is what the board has instructed me to do, and if I don't do it, well, we'll just leave the rest blank. So I think that's, personally, that's one way. I can support you or recommend that the board can support you, but, you know, also in terms of pragmatic things that we could do to help reduce your, your load so that you are, you know, you're making the important thing the important thing, and not being distracted with other things that other people could do.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, board members? See none?
I, just to quickly, just to quickly add on to something that Director Workman just said, I, she, her comment reminded me, as you were discussing the, some of the other components and saying that, you know, there might be some things like negotiations, for example, that you may step away from in the future. I, I think that, you know, continuously assessing where to place your time makes a lot of sense, especially because, you know, the last couple of years, you were new to Rochester, new to this district, forging relationships, and so, doing some of that heavy investment of time in your first couple of years is not the same thing now that you've done it and you're perhaps better, have the better capacity to direct it from a different level and empower others to, you know, be in some of those meetings makes a lot of sense to me, so, for whatever that's worth.
All right. We will move on to our next item, which is 4.1, a monitoring item, strategic plan implementation and project management update. Superintendent?
Thank you, Sharon Nathan. Thankfully, you are going to hear much less from me in this next section. You're going to meet a new colleague who, Gretchen Acasio, who I'll let introduce herself in a moment, and you are gonna be, oh, I've been feeling I hadn't been coming across tonight. You should have been. God, you just kicked me under the table. Gretchen Acasio, who you're going to meet in a moment. Heather Claveter, our director of academics at the elementary level. I'm super glad Heather is going to be here because some of the discussions I know about project management, which is our focus, may move into issues of literacy and the Read Act implementation, because that's what we're doing the project management around. So Heather, thank you for being here, so you're, you're able to really jump in on some of these content questions. And of course, Denise Moody, our director of fund development, another key member of the team. As I mentioned at the outset, I frankly didn't expect my mid-year discussion to take quite as long on my own part and, and so many questions, so it probably seems like ancient history when I said this. But this presentation is very much intended as a follow-through from what we just talked about, which is to say, the quality of implementation, in my experience, after more than three decades working in education, is one of the biggest fallbacks, weaknesses of school systems. That when I talk with my friends in the corporate world about the level of attention they bring to, like, changing product placement in a store, it's stunning. I have friends that worked at Target, and like, they would do sophisticated studies of what it was to move a product. And then we change a curriculum or a structure or launch a new program with almost no discipline or attention. And candidly, as I think especially you'll hear from Gretchen in a moment, it's not a skill set or even sort of a worldview that necessarily a lot of us as educators bring to the table. But we're learning it, and it's something that I have been eager to try out in an educational setting for most of those 30 years. And so, when a state grant came across, as I do in talking with Denise, who has this work as part of her portfolio, as well as work with our, our federal and state funds, and then an array of other things that I know board members will have more and more chance to talk with her about in the years ahead, I said to Denise, hmm, could we try something that I bet the state is gonna see as very different from all the other proposals that they're going to get for this grant? So I've asked Denise to be here, not only Gretchen reports to Denise, who is part of John's team in our Office of Administration, because she's intimately involved in launching the project management work, but also to start out by just describing the funding source that is providing us with our initial support for building this capacity in RPS. And then we'll, we'll, we'll get into the substance of the discussion after we talk about how we are very glad the state of Minnesota is enabling us to get this innovative work underway.
Thank you, Dr. Pecel. Yes, this was a grant that came out last summer, always with a short timeline. That's how MDE does their grants. And so, it was actually part of a federal program called the Bipartisan Safety Communities Act, which was a grant that was actually around gun violence, which it's interesting how we got here. But it was about being able to build safe and healthy schools. So it uses the same criteria as our Title IV grant. And as we were brainstorming and thinking about what might be the possibilities with this grant funds, we have a lot of great things going, right? We, we have a lot of things that are about building culture, that are about supporting the mental health of our students, that are, we have some of our threat assessment processes that are in place, restorative practices. And so, with Dr. Pecel's input, like, thinking about, hmm, maybe this is an opportunity to think about being able to do those processes better, to learn about how do we do change in a way that's more organized and that we have some processes around. And so, we were able to talk with our, the leaders at MDE about a grant proposal, and they were initially very supportive. And we were able to write the grant for project management support of the initiatives that we have in our strategic plan, which is a really unique opportunity, because usually grants are very student-focused for a lot of obvious reasons. And so, this was a very, it was at the right time. We were at the right place with these initiatives to be able to think about how could project management support in these different initiatives around our strategic plan. So there was, we received the max amount that we could apply for, so we received $500,000 to support this work over three years, to help us have a focus on the process of how we do improvements. Just on a side note, MDE has also been very excited about the work that we're doing here, and so, has been following our work, has been excited about our work around restorative practices in a couple of different areas, and they've been great about reaching out. I'm just doing a quick count, and I, I know we have a couple of coming to you in the next board, board cycle, but, and you heard about the MTSS grant last time, but I think this is our seventh one that we've received from MDE for grants in FY '24. So that is pretty amazing that they have been supportive of our work, and we are so excited to have Gretchen on board. I think that our whole team has been like, whoa, a little bit blown away about how, just having some tools to be able to think about how to do our work has been really enlightening, and I think will be able to impact a lot of different areas. So we're really excited for her to kind of highlight this kind of case study around some of the work that we're doing around structured literacy. I'll turn that over to Gretchen. We're so thankful to have Gretchen. Acasio joined our team as our coordinator of project management, and like I said, we've been able to learn a lot from her, and I'm excited to have her share her work so far with our district tonight.
Thank you. So as Denise mentioned, we're going to showcase how we've applied project management to the district, strategic initiatives, starting with the Read Act as one of the first projects. So I'll just give you a little bit of background on me. I don't want to focus on me, but I do come, oh, I do come from corporate America. I, I started my journey at St. Olaf College, which is just a little ways away from here, neighboring city to the west, and made my way up to the Twin Cities for most of my career, getting started immediately in project management across marketing firms. I've worked for BestBuy.com online, and then, most recently, software startups across the country. And I was really excited at this opportunity because I wanted to bring those skills closer to the community and, and do something local and have an impact on, on some initiatives that really do mean a lot and have really important outcomes. So that's what brought me here. And then I've, I've done some professional development outside of my original degree at E. Cornell with some leadership certificates. So the Read Act did pass this last year, and one of the biggest challenges in starting off the work on the Read Act is understanding, understanding what is the scope of this? How big is it? How does it impact us? How do we get started? And so, I wanted to just share with you the key challenges that we see in aligning our strategic initiatives and structured literacy implementation with the Read Act that went into place. Summarizing on these, we have a very rigorous professional development program that needs to be implemented. The first phase of the MDE legislation identifies possibly up to 500 of our educators needing to be fully trained by July 2025. So it's very ambitious. A change in our curriculum for K through five, and then standardization in how we screen, how we document interventions, how we report that data. And then, it also includes a family engagement piece, communicating those screening results to families, at-home support resources, and then overlapping with the MTSS work that's being done in the district as well. So, in summary, this is a really, really large initiative and a pretty aggressive timeline. So it, it was definitely a challenge in figuring out how to get started from strategy into implementation. I want to highlight before I tell you the how, I want to highlight what we have accomplished in the last couple of months. I did start with the district in November, so we've had three solid months to do some work already on the initiative. We have focused the initiative for professional development from potentially 65,000 hours that needed to be spread across the district with our 500 educators in Phase One. We focused that down to around 19,000. And what that's allowed us to do is streamline getting those educators into their programs, getting a jumpstart on that. And we already have about 100 early childhood educators well into their programs and another 200 of elementary and secondary. into their programs and another 200 of elementary and secondary that have already registered and have a planned track that they're going to be starting soon. So our district is definitely making really great progress on professional development. We've also developed a plan for the curriculum review and selection. Knowing that MDE was still looking at the different curriculum and what they were going to approve at the beginning of January, we knew that we had to have a pretty solid and orchestrated plan to get through the review process, the presentations with vendors, and then selecting the best curriculum for our district and getting those materials ordered. So that was, that was another pretty big lift that is in progress. But when MDE did publish that list of approved curriculum, the team was ready and were able to take action immediately. And then finally, we have already initiated a discovery and a gap analysis phase for the new assessment, intervention, and reporting requirements. And what this allows us to do is get clarity on the deliverables and consensus on how we're going to implement that moving forward. So some really great work in the last three months on the initiatives. And so the question comes up, how did we get there? And that's where I'm excited to introduce some of the key components of project management that I was able to bring to the district. Project management is pretty broad. So I focused on just a few components that would benefit the Read Act immediately and how we can implement that. And, and as we apply this more and more to strategic initiatives in the district, there are more tools in project management that can be brought and, and shared out with, with the different leaders. So the components are the clear understanding of deliverables, really knowing what are our actions, what are our outcomes, and what do we need to build, identifying risks and having a plan to mitigate them early on in the initiatives, looking at outcomes and activities-based approach to all of our meetings and our communications. And then, of course, not to be forgotten is the budgeting. Given the district has many budget sources coming together to implement this multifaceted, multi-phase program, it is really important to look at the budget and, and make sure that we're planning according to budget and incorporating the budget as a key influencer in, in how we implement. So diving in a little bit, and I'll try to paraphrase. I know there's a lot of the team with the slide. I don't think it's moved. Thank you. So diving in, the clear understanding of deliverables as the first component. The first thing we did is did a detailed review of the Read Act's dates, requirements, and milestones. This provided the project with the, the driving parameters and some of the deadlines that we needed to meet. From there, we incorporated all of that information into what we call a project charter. It essentially summarizes the district's response to those requirements and outlines who's involved, what are some of the timeline considerations, what are some budget considerations. And so it really gets all of the leaders in the district on the same page with what we're implementing and starting to talk about the hows and the whens. And then finally, we did structure a full project plan to manage all of those known aspects, but then also providing a framework so that we have the time and the action steps to work through the unknowns. And that, that was really key in allowing us to continue forward motion and making sure that we stay on track. One of the big issues that we avoid by doing that is what I call strategic paralysis, which is not taking action beyond the initial strategic objectives and goal definition. It's, it's a pretty common thing that a lot of time goes into determining what are the goals, what are the strategic objectives. And then there tends to be a big pause or almost a stalling to be able to move that into action. And so some of these tools helps us quicken that process so that we don't lose time between the strategy and when we actually start So the benefits that we've seen, we've had a common understanding across the district in how and when we take that action. We've had measured progress, understanding of dependencies, and a forecast of potential issues. And this entire process can be applied to any strategic initiative in, in the district. All of these tools really do apply well, whether it's a, a large initiative or a small initiative. So I just want to point that out. One of the most successful components that we've applied so far in the district is risk identification and mitigation as it relates to the initiative. By identifying the risks and potential and possible mitigation steps at the onset of a project or an initiative, it allows us to be proactive in how we're managing the project as opposed to being reactive when issues come up. So what we've been able to do is communicate with leadership on some of those mitigation steps for the risks that we've identified. And in this case, we've even prompted key decision makers to pivot when necessary so that we can improve our outcome and have greater success for the entire initiative. So we've been very successful in that. Some issues that we've avoided by doing this, missing MDE timelines, stressing the district employee culture. As, as I mentioned, it's, it's a really big lift to implement the professional development and all of the other requirements of the Read Act. And so we were able to maintain some calm across the district with how we implemented. We've avoided having to delay some literacy outcomes. By going through this process and solving some of these possible issues upfront, we may be positioned to see those outcomes sooner than if we hadn't done this. And then we've avoided some budget overruns and funding deficiencies by being ahead of it as well. I apologize, I'm not keeping up on my slides.
Most of us haven't.
Okay, great. So just as a couple of examples of how that risk and mitigation process worked in relation to the Read Act project or structured literacy implementation. Our risk was that letters, which was one of the three professional development programs that were applied, were approved by MDE. It required 48 hours of synchronous professional development in addition to about 120 hours per participant to complete the independent coursework. It caused some significant scheduling challenges. Having 500 people in the district trying to get together in live group sessions for three hours at a time throughout the duration of the coursework was logistically incredibly difficult. It was going to pull educators out of the classroom for extended periods. And our budgets would increase in order to absorb that. So we, we took some steps to mitigate that. We decided to reduce the out-of-classroom time by utilizing as many professional, professional development days as possible that were already on the district calendar. We assessed the feasibility of summer training. And then ultimately, we recommended to pivot to CORE, which was another professional development program that was approved for the first phase of our participants, since there was only three hours of group synchronous sessions and a much reduced burden on the individual for individual or independent study. So with that, we were able to take that risk from about 80% potential down to 20. Related to that, our teacher time and the contracts with the union may have posed some constraints and difficulty in accommodating professional development outside of their day. So expecting the educators to do it above and beyond their contract time was something we had to be careful about and consider. So the impacts of that to the district were having to pay for more sub-time, having complications with scheduling, and then there were union impacts. We had to make sure that the union was on board with what we were presenting and the workload changes for the educators. So those were all things that we identified. And so we took mitigation steps again on that and we limited as much as possible to the PD days. We, we tried to balance time outside of the classroom with perhaps some sub-time. And then we also, again, pivoted to CORE as our recommendation because of the reduced time that it took to get through the program, which then relieved the pressure of some of our substitute constraints, some of the pressure on individuals that perhaps the union would not be, you know, happy about to, to have implemented on top of everything else. And so through the mitigation, we were again able to reduce this risk from 50 down to about 10%. And so benefits we've seen through this process, we've had leadership support on those pivotal project decisions. We've continued forward progress and we've increased our potential for success. And so this, this graphic that you're seeing is an actual chart of how far we are on the professional development path for Phase One. And, and we're pretty, pretty advanced in the schedule. So we're, we're definitely on track to be able to accomplish what we need to in the timeframe for MDE, as well as the grant periods, which are providing the funding for a lot of this professional Another component that we applied to this initiative was focusing our, our meetings on having outcomes and activities-based approaches and agendas. So we've introduced short weekly status meetings focused on the updates, decisions, and actions only. Any deliberation meetings, we are pulling those out separately and making sure that they have clear objectives and clear deliverables. It's important to review information, have brainstorms, and share opinions, but without a clear outcomes approach to the meetings and expected actions, it's, it's possible that you're going to have the same meeting repeat. So trying to stay ahead of that, keep forward motion. We, we have clear agendas and outcomes for all of the meetings and we've seen success there with that. We've also avoided confusion on who is responsible for actions. There's a lot of people involved in this initiative, all of the academic directors, data assessments, and it goes on and on at the building sites as well. And so having a clear directive on who's responsible for what actions at the end of every meeting has, has been key here as well. So some of the benefits that we've seen here, time spent in meetings is always showing progress towards goals. We have synchronization across departments and across our sites in the district. And we have a common understanding of in-progress items and where support is needed. And one of the things that I've been thrilled to see with this process being implemented in the district is that when there are open items or help is needed, we've seen really fast responsiveness from leadership and support from all of the different departments coming together to solve those things. And it's, it's really cleared the hurdles to, to continuing forward motion.
I want to make sure people, Gretchen, see, you're all seeing that, that project status report. I get these emails that, first of all, I get a little weepy because I've been in so many, I've been in so many initiatives that are the opposite of the previous four bullets. Meetings are long, not focused on decisions, they don't have clear objectives, there's no framework, and nobody knows who's going to make the decision. And that is not at all like unique here. And so then when I get these updates, like those status reports, it helps me very quickly identify where the team is, what the issues are. And so it's been a pretty exciting thing to start to actually learn how to quickly read that and realize that there may be some issues that are there. So just didn't want to let that visual totally go by. You only see a glimpse of it. They actually goes, they're not short, but they're easy to read.
Can I ask a question about that? Is that new to your work here? Or, so you just brought it to us, new to us, and we've implemented it just in the last few months.
The status report template I tailored to what the district would need. And it's kind of a living template so that it adapts based on the information that, that the different department heads find most useful. But yeah, that, it's, it's a pretty standard template. But I do like to adapt that stuff to, to wear that. So not to forget budgeting, a key driver in, in all initiatives with the district in, in project management, it's kind of a triangle or a triad of impactors on a project. There's budget, or maybe I should call them levers. There's budget, there's timeline, and there's scope. And in this initiative, timeline and scope were, were two levers that were pretty, pretty difficult to work through. The scope is pretty set by MDE, the timeline is pretty set by MDE, and the timeline is aggressive. So we certainly had to look at budget as one of our levers in determining how to implement this and what to implement first. So as you can see here, we received four different grants, the CLSD grants this year. And Denise, I don't know if you want to give an overview of what those are, or if you want me to?
Sure, quickly. CLSD grants, grants that were put out, is actually a grant that the state of Minnesota got, and it was a five-year grant. And I think because of COVID, they hadn't necessarily been able to utilize all the funds they received as a state agency. And so they put it back out to districts and said, you have a very short timeline. The timeline of the grant was like December 1 through September 30th. So an incredibly short grant to use to fund specifically professional development around literacy. And so we could apply at each level, early childhood, elementary, middle, and high school. And our district chose to apply at all four levels. And we actually, there was only, there was 1.8 million available and we got 608,000. So we got about a third of the total funds that were available. But that put us on an expedited timeline, right? Because we also are trying to get all this money. It's federal money, so there's lots of rules, and we have to get it all wrapped up and out the door by September 30th. So that just put another layer on that grant. But it was an amazing opportunity for us to be able to fund all of our early childhood and a good portion of the training at the other grade levels.
Thank you. And then also, we're looking at the literacy incentive aid and yet to be determined is the Read Act literacy aid, which I believe is going to open up soon through October of 2027 or 2028. And so we definitely had to look at the timeline and how we were orchestrating all of this according to our fund sources and when those fund sources expire. And then also to implement it within the parameters of each one of those grants, but also in alignment with the Read Act. So I think that we've done it quite well. It took a lot of work across all of the departments, but we, we have orchestrated the rollout of this to take advantage of all of those funds that we'd been awarded in the right order and achieving the timeline goals, as well as making good progress for next year as well. So.
I just wanted to check, there are other funds that are also supporting our literacy work beyond what you see here. So this is, this is very important work with external origin that we need to do. But we also are putting other RPS dollars, for instance, into the curriculum purchase that is in ending.
Some issues that we've avoided, late determination of project funding deficits. So we're staying ahead of it, making sure that everything that we're planning to implement has a funding source tied to it, and making sure that stuff is accurate. Some benefits that we've seen, those funded, funding sources are serving as potential parameters for our scope. So again, for our scope, so again, direction on what and how we implement and when. But this also gives us the ability to directly tie the outcomes that we want to see with this entire literacy initiative to the investments that are being made. And so that's also a really nice framework for us to introduce so that as we expand project management, as we do other strategic initiatives, we can apply that framework and start to tie what those investments are and what those outcomes are. As far as future considerations for the district as it relates to project management in general, defining actions and deliverables for all the strategic initiatives. I know that there's been a lot of work done on strategic initiatives, defining them, the goals, how we're applying them to the sites and the site goals. So further defining those actions and deliverables. Conducting outcomes, action-based meetings, this is one of my favorite things in project management, and it really does work, so I think that that could be applied in a lot of different situations. Tying collaborations and inputs, actions and follow-ups. I've noticed in the district, there's a lot of input meetings and it's, everyone's really collaborative in sharing feedback and inputs and being planful and diligent in tying the follow-ups and actions to those inputs helps provide clarity of responsibility and then also does strengthen the team trust. And so with that, you get a lot more, a lot better outcomes, you get more support at all levels in the follow-through and implementation. Attaching success metrics to all goals. So what does success look like so that we can attach the deliverables and the actions to what the success is defined as? Conducting some feasibility studies and preliminary planning before decisions are made so that we can prevent having to pivot midstream or midway through an initiative. It can also help save on resources and time and budget by doing that. And then having realistic goal setting with incremental milestones combined with stretch goals. So we all want to accomplish things at 100%, but if we meet a goal at 98%, we're not considering that successful. And adjusting our frame of reference for how we're defining those goals and stretch goals and what success criteria means is going to allow everybody to feel a little bit more fulfilled and have that satisfaction of actually meeting some goals as opposed to missing the lofty goals. So those were just some observations in my short time with the district that perhaps could have some potentially positive impacts with little effort to implement. So just wanted to leave you with those ideas.
Thank you, Gretchen, and welcome. This was a great way for you to dive in and for us to get a chance to meet you. Superintendent, do you have anything to add?
I just want to encourage board members, if there are questions about the substance of the literacy work, I'm really glad Heather Claveter could be with us. And not that Heather's the only person who can answer those, but lots of us have a piece of that, but just encourage Heather to jump in and board members also, if there are questions about the substance of that. And obviously, you know, Gretchen knows a lot about that as well, but in particular is leading the process piece. Go on forward.
One thing that I would add, as we look at it from the project management perspective, which has really been an awesome learning experience about how strategically we can coordinate so much of the work because it spans into so many different departments and areas, and of course, we're talking early childhood, elementary, and secondary. What's really been beneficial as well is it has allowed us to do the deep work to really think about how are we going to impact those student outcomes? Because as we look at the examples up there about the selection of what program are we actually going to do, you know, letters has been very well known to be so impactful across the nation. We have had several people in our district trained in that as well, and that we really did a deep study into the impact of letters CORE. We reached out to districts across the nation, we got some information, tried to reach out to see the impact there. Fortunately, the student outcomes, it's hard to tie it directly to one of the programs, right? Because a lot of the Read Act work that's going on in our nation is in coordination of rolling out structured literacy curriculum in addition to the structured literacy training for our teachers. And something that we really considered as we evaluated all that was offered is the amazing work that has been going on in our district with structured literacy training that started a couple of years ago in the district and has grown this year to have all of the teachers and principals and coaches getting those trainings of Scarborough's rope, all of the pieces of the rope. Today, I was able to join one of the kindergarten sessions as they're stretching into the upper parts, the language comprehension part of the rope. And our trainers here in the district, they're all letters-trained, they're also using the handbook from CORE training to bring that training to our elementary staff. So it's been really powerful to see that. And with that in mind, as we were looking at the difficulty to meet the timelines, we knew that in Rochester, our teachers have already gotten the foundational pieces of training, so this will be a really nice complement to what has already begun. So there's a lot of deep thinking and study going on, and it's so appreciated as we look at all the different strategies required in the Read Act that the project management piece can keep us moving together in a coordinated way and have those timelines in mind and also allow us to do the deep dive and study into the decisions that will ultimately impact our student outcomes. So I just wanted to add that piece because I know it's a different view when we look at the project and literacy and student outcomes and supporting teachers. So it's been wonderful to have it coordinated across so many different areas.
Board members? Director.
So first on the project management piece, you mentioned gap analysis. Could you explain a little bit what that is referring to?
Yeah, it's kind of a technical term that I brought from the software project management experience that I have, but gap analysis is really taking a look at your current state or your current tool or your current methods, identifying what the ideal state is that you want to get to, and then measuring what is the gap or identifying what are the actions, the tools, the processes that are missing. So when I speak to gap analysis as it relates to our screening and assessments and interventions and our parent engagement and communication on those assessment results, what we've done is we've taken a look in a focus group, what do the schools have in place for screening? How are they leveraging FastBridge, EduClimber? And then what are the best practices that they have as it relates to looking at the data? Are there any intervention processes that are already documented and formalized across the district? And then what is the ideal state that we strive to get to in the district, not only to fulfill the requirements of the Read Act, but for us to be in a really great place from a district perspective? And then we worked with the focus group to identify, what are those things that are going to put us into that ideal state? What are the standing operating procedures? What are the resources for our educators? What are resources for the family and engagement that we need to identify? And making sure that we account for those in scope and plan for the development of those and the rollout of those in this initiative. Sorry, long answer, but real-world application.
No, that is helpful. And then especially because we're, it sounds like excited to leverage this framework for lots of aspects of the strategic plan, I just, I was really wondering how the risks were quantified. You had a couple of charts where they went from 80% to 20% or 50% to, like, how should we be thinking about, what is that an expression of risk of, what do those percentages mean?
So it's the likelihood or potential that that risk will become an issue. And so in this case, I did a more simplified scoring of that where I looked at how widespread would the risk be, how many people or how many sites would be impacted by that risk becoming an issue, and then the likelihood. So is it very likely, is it not very likely? And so it was a pretty simple scoring. Depending on the initiative, there are more robust and complicated scorings for risk assessment. But I didn't apply them to this just because we're just getting traction and it served as purpose to help us identify without having to spend a lot of upfront time on the scoring piece of it.
So like the risk of being off track on that objective and so the point is you want it to be low, right?
Yeah, exactly. So one example of risk was, I'm trying to think, a risk of missing our MDE deadlines. It was very high with certain factors in place. We took the mitigation steps to evaluate, actually plan how we could implement, work with leadership on decision-making and pivoting, and that's how we were able to reduce the likelihood of it actually becoming an event.
Very cool. And was the software that is being leveraged for this part of the grant as well?
We did. It was a fairly low-cost software. I mean, I think it was like $30 a month. So it's a pretty affordable software, so, but I think we are using grant funds to support.
Well, that's great. Well, this is all really exciting. I have just one more question. I shouldn't say things like that because I think it's not words, but on the more, I guess substantive aspects of the implementation of the Read Act, could you elaborate a little bit on the feasibility of summer training? Like what was being envisioned or what was weighed there? I'm just really, really curious.
Yeah, well, so we looked at different offerings of training for the teachers, for the CORE training, for example. I'll just use elementary, of course, for example.
Because CORE is a brand like letters, so it's not like COR? Okay, great. No, it's fine.
So as we were thinking about how to actually offer this opportunity to teachers and meet their needs and also their schedules, and in partnership with the teachers' union, we provided three tracks so that they had choices of when they would engage in the learning. So we have a standard track that is basically within their contracted time, and so we're providing subs and we're leveraging the professional development days. Then there's another one that was offered that they would use the professional development days, and they would also get stipends outside of the school day when they're doing the additional asynchronous work. And then the summer one is being offered, I think it starts right away June 6th, that's an option through like early August, for teachers that would like to just take it on during the summertime and work through those 45 hours and have it completed prior to the school year beginning when we know that we'll be rolling out some literacy curriculum. That's what the plan is at the time. So I think that's what we were excited to offer to the teachers, and I think that several of them are selecting the summer track, right? It was offered during the grant phase, that CLSD, I hope I'm saying that right, phase, and it's also going to be offered to the next phase, which is Phase One, as an early bird training for people that may want to select that and do the work during the summer so that they can then have it completed before they start the school year in the fall.
As it relates to how we assess the feasibility of the summer program, we actually took the pacing guides and the assignment outlines from the programs and laid it over our district's calendar and determined what would be in contract, what would be in professional development days, how long is our summer, and is this doable with the number of hours for independent study and the number of live sessions that we would need to coordinate. So we did that with both letters and CORE, and we did that for completing it entirely within contract, completing it in addition to contract during the school year, and completing it as a summer institute.
I was just going to make, very briefly, make the point, when they brought the three tracks, the three options, I was thrilled because I mentioned during the discussion of my mid-year goals that supporting professional practice is an area where I think we're beginning to get some progress. And when you bring very busy teachers, three different options, as opposed to this is the one way you have to do it on the timeline that works best for the district, it's different practically. Like, somebody might be much more ready to do it in the summer when they're not teaching. But it's also, I think, I hope, acknowledging of their importance and role as professionals making those decisions. And so there are three options as opposed to this is the one option that you'll do it. And so I think it's something that we want to keep leaning into. We can't always do that, sometimes there isn't that possibility, but the more we can, the more they can make the decision that fits best for them professionally and personally.
I know that there's a whole other phase of work that kicks in once we've chosen a curriculum, there's additional professional development. So what can you tell us about the progress on the timeframe and the tasks related to choosing the curriculum? Because the board will have to take a vote to purchase the actual curriculum that's chosen. So can you give us a sense of how that's progressing?
Yes. Yeah, so we brought the team together a couple of times now, the curriculum adoption team, the literacy team, which incorporates many teachers, coaches, school leaders. And right now, we're really studying the curriculums that came out on the MDE list that are out there for reimbursement. They listed one comprehensive curriculum, EL Education, that's the first one that we dug into together. And then there's one that's knowledge building, and that's WIT and Wisdom. And then there are three that are those foundational areas, two of them are K through two, and then there's one that's K5. And so currently, our team, after reviewing the rubric information that was provided by the state, they did a real deep dive and analysis that really did help our team to move forward into hearing some presentations because they really kind of outlined where this curriculum is strong, where we might need a little support. But basically, we've just been now digging into the different curriculums and samples, having the vendors come and do some presentations, and then we will ultimately determine if we have something promising out of that. We've looked, we're considering really all right now K5, or will it be 3.5, or based on the needs at the different grade levels. So, yeah, so there have been questions because since the state gave us five curriculums and only one comprehensive, there have been questions about the reconsideration process because curriculums that were not listed can submit at the end of this month, their materials once again to be reviewed and be reconsidered. The state then has 60 days to then add them back to the list, which definitely, if we're talking in project management language, that would present a risk for us as we're looking at, I'm getting good at that language, as we look at implementation. We're really, you know, selecting the curriculum is just so very important and impactful for our students, and I really believe that the implementation process, as we look toward how are we going to actually support our teachers in implementing, is even more critical for us. And so there's lots of discussions, there's lots of calendars up in my office with possibilities for next year of how we will then implement. But our timeline right now would be that our goal would be, you know, this spring that we would have a recommendation to bring to Dr. Pakel based on her study.
And then to you.
Great. I have another question about the broader application of the project management piece. I think, like you said, this is not usually a technique or series of tools that we've seen in the work that the district has done. And I think it gives us a window into the management piece of the work of the district, and of course, our role here at the board is governance. But we do have, you know, as we talked about in your evaluation presentation, we do have these presentations scheduled to come to the board to give us an update on what's happening. So I'm wondering if you thought at all about what components of this project management work would come to the board table in terms of, I'm really interested in things like the project charter that gives us that overview at the beginning of the work. And then, you know, you're setting goals and you know which goals that you've met. Is there some measurement that's important that you think for the board to know about? This is how we planned it, this is how well we did in the goals that we set, the goals we met. Any thought you'd give to that?
Yeah, I think over time, it would be very exciting to have a strategic dashboard that rolled up. that rolled up progress on things like this to a strategy level. So we'd be able to look at something like the post-secondary pathways work that, as Director Barlow mentioned, Will has been doing a great job leading. And we'd be able to actually say, the post-secondary pathways work featuring Zelo and the council's work, where is it in an implementation phase? Now underneath that has to be this level of rigor, or else it's just kind of a guess. So that for sure, I think, would be relevant to the board. I will be honest, I think with this board, I'm not concerned about what I, a moment ago called crop, crop dusting, which is that board members, some of you may choose to never go down to the crops and always stay at the strategy level, but I'm confident that with this board, if you do go down to the crops, you're doing it to learn what's happening, and then you pull up to give me direction about the thing. There are other superintendents in this state who have board members who never want their plane to fly up there in the clouds and always wanna be down there and provide very detailed direction on implementation. And I think there but for the grace of God goes Rochester. Like that is, that is, you know, I think that milestone, or that person should be on that team, or that principal, we do not have that here, and I do not take that lightly. So I like the idea of giving the board some visibility, for instance, with project charters, with things like that, as we build this out. I do think we always have to be mindful of the tension, and I have to have it as a superintendent. I have to actually restrain myself from going too far down and saying, okay, how do we manage some of those things? I will just say, and thank you for, first of all, the great presentation and for engaging in this. I do think as we move forward with this work, we will face a kind of a fork in the road, which isn't, it isn't entirely an either-or, but given that we only have one Gretchen right now, though I'd love to grow it into a small but mighty team. One is, we could apply this methodology to other initiatives in the strategic plan, and the grant that Denise talked about does call for that. So we could do it in the post-secondary pathways work, we could do it in the family engagement work. I mean, this level of rigor is there. Another alternative is that we could be building the capacity of leaders in the building and the district level to be using some of those tools across their work, across the skip plans, across the funding redesign work. That would be less Gretchen doing it for the team, which is obviously the highest level of implementation, and then as opposed to building the capacity of others to use some of these methodologies. We're not at that point yet, and we're still learning how to do this, we're validating it, but I think that over time, that's something I can see us needing to think about, how we wanna actually move the work forward. I think in the near term, we will add, and we already are beginning to add this methodology to some other key initiatives in the strategic plan, but ultimately, the ability of a single school to think about their own improvement work in this same way would be a huge quantum leap. So that's not where we are right now, but that could be exciting to think about in the years ahead.
Any other comments, board members? Thank you, Gretchen. Heather, Denise? Anybody up for a ten-minute recess? Yes, so we will come back at seven fifty-two.
The board is back in session at seven fifty-two PM. Our next item is item five point one. It's a prep for action on the school board election system. So just to give some background, the purpose of this agenda item is for the school board to discuss whether or not to hold a primary election for school board seats one, three, and seven in two thousand and twenty-four. Minnesota State Statute, chapter two oh five A, establishes the requirements for school district elections and authorizes the option for school districts to hold primary elections and describes the process to be used to establish the practice in the district. At the February sixteenth, two thousand and ten meeting, the Rochester School Board cast a resolution to choose nominees for school board office by primary election. And according to that resolution, if there are more than two candidates for a specified school board position, the school district must hold a primary. That resolution is effective for all following elections of school board members unless the board mem, unless the school board takes a vote to revoke that resolution. So that is, that is the option for our action that's before us. If we would like to take action to revoke the resolution, we have to take that action before April fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-four, but were we to take it earlier, we could communicate the election plans to the community and plan for events that we've had in the past before elections like school board academy. And in the agenda item, there's five points with data and background information on some of the issues to consider, including there have been inconsistencies in the need for a school board primary in recent elections. Primary winners have won by a majority in recent elections and all have gone on to win the general election by even larger majorities. Rochester would be following the practice of the majority of school board districts in Minnesota if it did not hold a primary. The district could save costs by not holding a primary, and candidate campaign costs would be reduced by running only one election, which could remove a barrier for individuals considering running for the school board. So given that information, board members, any discussion or questions? Director Marvin?
First of all, thank you for the information you provided, for the information that's in our packets. I think it's very informative. I don't remember that we have had a primary in recent decades where there have been more than three candidates running for a position. I, I think that when there are three, it's, it's a different situation than if there would be five or six. I don't think it's realistic that we're ever gonna have five or six people running for a position, but again, I don't know. So briefly, I think being able to save money by not having primaries is a great idea. I personally, I personally like that idea. However, even though it's in our purview, I feel uncomfortable that the board would make the decision to eliminate primaries without getting feedback from the public. So that's what I would like to do, is just get from the public feedback about is a primary valuable to them or not? And if we don't get an overwhelming response that they think it's great, I think that we should go ahead and just not have them.
And are you inviting the public to give us feedback?
Not right this minute, but.
I will check my Twitter feed.
Emails, et cetera?
Yeah. Or some, some online survey or whatever. I don't know honestly if a whole lot of people are gonna care, but I just would feel better if we get the opportunity for people to voice their opinion one way or the other. And I understand that that's not something we need to do.
Dr. Marvin?
Yes.
You said you could not remember a school board election where there were more than three candidates. In two thousand and fourteen, there were four candidates for seat five. You were one of them.
There were three.
Five. There were Kerry Bronson, Matthew, Paul Halleck, Nora Dooley, and Jean Marvin.
Okay, well, what's his name dropped out?
Well, he was unvalid. They were all unvalid.
I think that, that would pose an issue.
Chair Nathan?
Yes, Director Marvin.
I, I agree with the premise of Dr. Marvin's concern. I think we could certainly do so in a timely fashion. And I believe the superintendent and the board, we have tried to be more diligent in our forward-facing, if you will, to the, with the community, and there's no reason for us to not continue that, even though it's well within our purview to simply vote, to adopt. I don't think there's anything that, well, the one thing we could probably learn if we were to actively seek community input would be where they are on the issue versus simply decide. simply deciding for them. And I haven't heard that, well, we don't care what the community wants, so that's important to be communicated. So just reiterating, I, I think it would be, and we're not voting tonight, but I think it would be nice to allow the community to provide some input. I don't know what method, you know, online ser- I don't know, whatever. Who would decide that if I, if you don't mind me asking?
So the question we'd essentially be asking the community is, does it matter to them that in the general election, they only have two candidates to choose from? Because the difference between a primary election and a general election is really the number of candidates. And as we presented in the, in the information, we have not needed a primary for all of our seats in our election, at least back since 2016. And I think Director Workman looked before 2016. So we have had seats for which they weren't required to run in a primary because there were only two candidates in the election. So I think if we're going to ask the community the question, we have to ask them specifically the choice that they're making. So they're essentially making a choice between choosing between two candidates in a general election or more than two candidates in the general election for each seat.
I thought the question was, are they comfortable with us making that decision, like, on our own? Because if it's going to benefit me, like, my seat is up, this upcoming. So if it's going to benefit me and we're just sitting here making the decision, I think to me it was more like a transparency issue. And maybe, I don't know, maybe we're mincing words, but it's not necessarily to put the resolution to them, although if we are going to choose not to make the decision for ourselves and they are going to tell us the information, maybe we should also be asking that. But I think it's more of a transparency, like, are you concerned that we might be doing something nefarious if we don't ask you this and we all vote, like, yeah, have no primary?
I have sort of a related question that informs that, that it's, I'll ask my second part first, that is the intent of this recommendation to pass this resolution not just for 2024, but ongoing after that?
Yes, so it would be in place unless we revoked it again.
Right.
To put a primary in place.
And I get that, but the idea would be to put it in place moving forward.
Right.
I think we need to include that in the communication, that it's not just a one-time for 2024 for some nefarious purpose.
Right.
But that it's the intent of doing it for a broad range of reasons that you're listing here. So I think the question, I think, is very critical as to what we would ask.
And I think it's important to note that it doesn't matter what year we took this vote, there would always be school board members for whom, should they choose to run for reelection, they would be voting on whether or not to have a primary in their next election.
But I, I also think, like, something like that, like, maybe if we're not recognizing that there's an issue right now today, the, it'll probably be one of those things where, like, we pass whatever version of it we're going to and no one's going to care until there's a problem and then it's too late because the election already happened. You know what I mean? So if, like, if we say, nope, we don't want primaries anymore, and then this upcoming election, 14 people run for my seat and then 12 of them decide to drop out before the general election, and there's really technically only two candidates, but everyone's names are still on the ballot, but we don't get voted on, and then somebody that's voted for that chose to step out is now the person who's technically the winner, then we're in, like, what kind of a debacle? So I feel like then we would have to be like, oh, well, now we have to, like, run it again, and then that's still money. So it's like, unless something like that weird is going to happen, like, the problem has already occurred and now we're going to have to wait again until the next time the election's coming up to, like, change the issue. You know what I mean? I'm not necessarily against the, the proposal.
Right.
And I feel like it's, it is one of those things where, like, yes, I would rather have the community tell us all the weird things that they think are probably going to happen if we change so that we can weigh all of that. Because I hold right now basically just two things is, well, I can see if it's going to save the district money, that would be helpful. And if that's kind of why we're doing this, is to be able to ease the process and save us a few dollars, yay. But I can also recognize, like, I was a first-time candidate, so I had no idea how I was doing, like, going up to the election. And so for me, strategically, that was difficult because I'm like, I'm running against an incumbent. I don't, am I beating him out in places? Am I not? Like, I don't know where, where we stand. And obviously, there were just two of us, so we weren't going to have a primary anyway. But I think if there are people who want or need, or like, they're more strategic like that as a candidate, they may prefer to have a primary if there's an option for one.
Assuming there's more than two candidates, is that?
Correct. But like, we just keep, we just keep getting lucky, I guess, in that we haven't had to have a primary for most of our seats. So like, I mean, is it an issue that we actually need to change?
Well, I think I'd like to get some board feedback on that piece because one of, one of the things that stood out to me about the inconsistency in the primary is the fact that we, we run all of our seats at the same time in the election, so all three are up one year, four are up the other year. So every board member's position is up in that election. But it's possible that some of the board members aren't engaged in the conversation of the election until the general because they don't have a primary. So there's discussion happening and issues being talked about in June, July, and August that some people who are running for the board have no requirement to weigh in on because they can sit out until the general election happens. And I don't know if that's.
Depending on the town hall.
A complete picture for our community.
Correct.
Because, you know, majorities matter, that four, four people can change the character of the board. Is it important for our community to see, because we have seats, the positions of all candidates running all at the same time so that they can weigh, you know, they, they might want a candidate who has a certain perspective, so they might support them for seat one, but they're looking for a balancing candidate, but they don't know that that candidate is going to be a balance because they're not part of the primary and they don't hear anything about them until the general election. So that was one of the things I was thinking, is that a general election puts everybody on the ballot at the same time. There's, there, there's no way for us to predict because we don't know how people are going to gain the seats for the primary.
I think it would be education for those who are engaging us in, like, the town halls, so like League of Women voters or like out Rochester, because we did, like, 1,300 events and we didn't have a primary, but obviously, we didn't necessarily know what was going to happen. So I feel like there are still ways, even if you're not going to have a primary, that you can still have your voice heard. It's just helping other people who might hold those events know that, yes, we still want to be part of that, even though you're not going to vote on us until November.
Director Marvin.
So in this last election, four seats were up. Three of them had primaries. Mine did not. And I got some panic calls from people who said, I just voted in the primary, are you not running?
Yeah, we got that too.
You know, like, what's going on here? So I think, I think that's an issue. Back in 2004, there were three seats that were up, there was no primary, and they were effectively elected as soon as they filed because there were no challengers to the three incumbents, so that was one year. In 2006, there were, were, four seats were up and there were three candidates for each seat. In 2008, and this was the year that precipitated us having a primary, there were 13 candidates for three seats. And I think at the time, somebody had either not paid attention to when we had to have a deadline for when we were, if we were going to have a primary or not, and that was missed, which is why there were so many on, on the ballot that year. In 2010, there were four seats up for a total of three on one seat, four on one seat, five on one seat, and three on one seat. So that was a lively season for everybody.
Putting us where we need to.
Right, well, I was going to get to that. And then in, in, Kathy, how far back did you go?
I went back to 2016.
Okay, so in 20, in 2012, we had, must have been three seats up. And there was a primary for two of those three seats. There were three candidates for each of those. And then in 2012, there were four seats up. I'm sorry, 2014, there were four seats that were up. Two of the incumbents were not challenged and one seat had two candidates, so there was no primary for that one. And there were four candidates for the other seat, one of whom, I guess, dropped out after the deadline, or, but the name was on the ballot, so. I was, I wanted to go past, back farther than 2004. Lucky for you that that information's not on the Secretary of State website, so I don't know if they were not reporting school districts.
Chair Nathan, could I ask Director Workman a question about what you just talked about? That it'd be helpful if you could share that with all of us so we don't have to redo your research. Thank you for doing that.
Oh, yeah, I would be happy to do that.
The, the year that you talked about, the 13 candidates, how many were for each seat?
Three seats. In 2006, is that the one?
Whichever one.
2008?
I think it was, I think it was 2008.
13 people for three seats.
Okay, because there were, in 2008, there were, I did type this out because it's, okay, so in 2008, for seat one, there were 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Seat three had three and seat seven had five. And there was no primary that year. The winner for seat one had, with five candidates, had 39.11% of the vote. For seat three, three candidates, the winner had 47.83% of the vote. And for seat seven, which had five seats, the winner had 32.61%. So there were still, there were still, even if though it was only a plurality of votes, the difference between the person who won and those who did not was, was fairly, fairly large.
Like, quite a bit different from 50 as well.
From what?
From 50%, or 51% or whatever.
Well, right. And then in the 2014 election, there were three candidates for seat, I'm sorry, 2014, wrong one, for camp, for seat one. There were four, 14, no, I'm sorry, 2018 is what I'm looking for. So for, for one seat, there were three candidates, for another seat, there were three candidates. For the other two seats, there were effectively two candidates for each seat because on one of the seats, the candidate dropped out once again before the election, but did not, but the name still remained on the ballot.
So Chair Nathan?
Director Garcia was my.
I'm sorry.
I was going to ask a, a money question, and then basically, I'm just saying, I'm fine, but to me, this suggests that we do need to just ask the people what they want us to do. If we choose not to vote on the thing that you're suggesting, does it, what is my question? Is it costing us money to have a primary or to have a primary be an option even when there is not one?
To assume that there's going to be a primary?
No, because if there aren't.
You mean if only two candidates sign up for each seat?
Correct.
Like in 2020?
In, in May?
Yes.
No.
So like, if we don't say, yes, we want to scrap it, if, if we just keep moving forward, as often seems to happen, where there's only two people and so we're not going to have a primary anyway, it's not going to cost us money to, to not vote on what you're asking?
But the costs are basically fixed if just one seat has a primary. So it only takes one of them having an extra candidate.
Thank you, that's, yeah, okay. And yes, my other comment is, I feel like there's enough discussion that I would, I would prefer to have some community feedback before we vote.
What, I'll, I'll, before I ask my question, I'll ask, I'll ask Director Marvin.
Well, you were seeking input, giving us an opportunity to provide comment. This is currently scheduled to be on the agenda for our next meeting.
It doesn't have to be, no. Only, only if we reach consensus tonight to take action.
But before August, April?
April, April 15, yeah.
I do have one more piece of feedback that, first of all, that I currently hold at seat three if anyone has any questions, so that's my disclosure. It also occurred to me while I was thinking about this, one of the, if you're a super political geek, potentially, one of the values of having a primary is that you can see the, if you look at the data, you can see the outcome of that election as you determine what your vote is going to be for the general election. If people dig in that deep, you know, was it close or was it not close, or, you know, what the data was looking at that. The other thing that occurred to me, though, that hadn't really until I started thinking about this, is that I think there is some difference in the, the seats, so there's three seats up for 2024 in a presidential election versus an election that's, I call them the governor elections, the, the mid-year elections. And I haven't quite gotten all my thoughts around that, but in terms of, in our current political climate, the amount of noise related to elections, that I worry that if, in a, particularly in a presidential year, because that's my cycle, is that without a primary, people might not even recognize that there is a school board election or that there are candidates running. And we'll get lost in all of the communication and drama about the presidential election, that voters might not be informed about their school board races until potentially the last minute, if at all.
I second that.
And then also, I'll recognize, I think, Dr. Garcia and I have a little bit different view and, and Director Cook as well, that we were first-time candidates during the pandemic, so also, I don't feel like I'm fully informed in the bigger picture of historical information about how this works when there isn't a pandemic ongoing as in, as it was in 2020.
So if we are going to ask the community for feedback, I think we need to provide them information along with, I mean, they may, if we just say, do you want us to have a primary, they may not understand it's really not their choice unless you have enough candidates who sign up to have.
It's a complicated question.
Right, primary.
Yeah.
So what kind of information, and it can be either from the information that was in the background or things that you're thinking of, that you think we should provide as a background to the community?
Chair Nathan, could this be something our communications, could perhaps finagle? Or is this outside the purview of what our communications staff would, would normally do?
Well, I'm going from the perspective that this is the decision we're going to have to make. So we should be providing the, the community with the information that we're considering as we're making the decision. So that's why I'm asking board members, which of the information you see, the factors that you're considering, would you want a community member to know before they weigh in on whether, on, on how they'd like to influence your vote?
Well, you've done a great job already with what you presented here tonight.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm asking, is, is there any of that? Is there anything else? Director Marvin?
Well, and it was really easy for me to say, just survey the community, because I don't have to run the survey, so I'm not sure how complicated that gets. But it seems to me that what you have written here, the purpose of this agenda item is for the school board to discuss whether or not, whatever. And then you have the considerations, you know, three or four considerations, and then just, we want to know what you think.
So include the background material that's in the agenda?
And even without that, just the considerations, this is why we are considering not holding primaries any longer. And, you know, they can think about that and, you know, being in particular, the district would save money by not holding a primary. But I think if there is strong pushback from the community that primaries are really important to them, I mean, they're the ones that are voting. I just, I agree that I think in, because of transparency, I think it's going to be a bad look if the board says, you may be voting, but we're deciding who. you may be voting, but we're deciding who, how that's going to look. So I just, I would really like that opportunity for them to speak their piece.
And do we have a preference? It sounds like people want some sort of online forum response.
Chair Nathan, I have one other thought. That I have concern particularly as a person who's holding a seat that's open in 2024 or up for election in 2024. I don't want to make a campaign issue out of this. That would be detrimental, you know, in, in, you know, having some sort of bad luck for the candidates that are on the ballot this year. My suggestion for the question would be have a basic question. You know, should we hold a primary or not? And how important is it to you to have a primary in the school board elections in Rochester? And then have a link to the more detail. So have an easy question, and if people want to dig in deeper, they can.
With a little bit more explanation because we have to make it clear that it's, again, it's not our choice to hold a primary.
Right.
If we don't have the number of candidates. Director Marvin?
Why not put a pause on this, present it in a non-election year? So it's non-political, okay? Next year is a non-election year, okay? And revisit it at that time. Because, I mean, the three of us, I'm seat one, I think, Jeff, you're.
Three, seven.
Three, seven. So I, similar to Director McLaughlin, don't necessarily want to have this as a potential election year, you know, issue or, or discussion point when there's no need for it to be, you know? We can take our time in a non-election year to, you know? Where there's nothing pushing us, there's community, won't have any, I don't think they'll wonder, well, what's up with this? The election's just around the corner, or, I don't know. Just a random thought.
I like the juice, but we don't have to make an issue. I like it when it's juicy. I don't feel it becomes an issue. But I can also appreciate, like, yeah, we don't need to have this conversation right now and have it appear even though it doesn't necessarily benefit those who would be running again. I think that would be helpful. So like a non-election year would be, that would seem less, less juicy.
But can you really say whether it would be a benefit or a detriment to people, to incumbents who are running in an election, to have a primary or not have a primary? Because once again, it's depending on how many people file for each seat. And in your election, there were only two per seat, so there was no primary. Somebody had asked a question a few minutes ago about, like, what, what are we looking at for numbers? So in the, the last election, we had about 25,000 people who voted in the primary, roughly. And a little over 45,000 who voted in the general election. And as we look through the research, I think there was one year, 2006 was a little bit of an anomaly. But the person who won the primary always won the election. And in 2006, we were talking about margins of about 23 people, voters between the first and second choice in the primaries. So the person who won the primary by 23 votes ended up losing in the general election. But that, I mean, that's such a small number statistically that, you know, it could flip either way, but.
I, I think that what we're hearing here, though, is not about the reality, the facts. It's about, is, is this going to be turned into a political football? Is it going to be awkward? Because some will perceive it absolutely without any basis as being political, and that could be a bad look.
Well, and the question before us isn't that we, as Director Barlow said, have to make a decision. We could also make a decision that we're not making a decision this year. I mean, we're, the purpose of this conversation is to say, we'd like to move forward in considering whether to take a vote on whether or not we'll, we'll have a primary. What I've heard that a step before that would happen is that you would want to get feedback. A second choice that we have is that we could reach a consensus tonight that that's not a vote we want to take this year. Because as you said, there's no reason we have to. The only thing we would have to do is issue a notice of election, which we would have to do anyway. And the notice of election would just say, we're having a primary. Here's when the filing starts, general election, et cetera. So if board members want to weigh in as to whether or not this is not even a vote you want to take this year, that is also an option that we can come to a conclusion on tonight.
And Chair Nathan, one of the thoughts that I had when I looked at this at first is that should the candidates with the seats up for this year, would we need to recuse ourselves from that vote? Because it's the next election. But I recognize that the next year, that would impact the other four, but not as close to the.
Not in the same year.
Not in the same year, right, not as close to the election.
If we, if we make a decision to not make a decision for this year, I still think it would be a good idea that we not wait until we know who the candidates are for the 2026 election because it could have the same perception even if we made that decision in 2025. So we could have a vote that we would either change or not change the primary after getting, you know, community support and make that decision now if we were going to change the primary. But it wouldn't be for the 2024 election. So that way, there could be, there would be no bias about, well, is this helping or hindering a candidate? But if we waited until after this election, we'd still have the same, the same discussion again whether we made that decision in 2025 or 2026.
One of the other things that factored in, looking at the historical information, and I didn't do the research to know when this was implemented, but it seems to me that the implementation of early voting and the use of that for the, the no excuse now does have an impact that we would file in, you know, May, early June. And then early voting starts so quickly that that may impact people in their decisions about whether they want to run or not. If there's a potential for a primary, I just think that factors into people's thinking on this issue. And that's one of the other changes that I've seen over the years that when earlier data didn't have that implication, but currently it does. Director Cook?
Well, I guess to take a slightly different tack here. I, I don't have the sense that our community has a difficult time getting in touch with the school board and expressing their views. And I, I, I would certainly welcome any sort of community input on this or any other topic. I don't think that it would be a, my view anyway, a great use of district communication expertise and resources to create some kind of an online survey on this topic. I think that individual board members are very well positioned to seek out community input. We have a listening session coming up the end of this month. If this is something that we want to continue to gather different perspectives on. The rationale to move ahead with a decision, in my mind, is because I think, well, the, the budgetary impact, $36,000 on a, on a primary election or $36,000 for classroom materials. I mean, that, that's kind of the way that I would see the impact of not making a choice now. And then I, I guess, just broader point, though. I, I think my, my assessment is that most people in our community, almost certainly majority, are fundamentally confused about the school board seats to begin with. It is confusing. It doesn't really make sense that we label ourselves or we have different seat numbers, but we're all elected from the same electorate. It's just kind of a strange setup that is not intuitive to anyone. And so it requires a bunch of explanation. Maybe something that's more intuitive, like if we're going to have at-large seats, maybe they should just all be elected at-large. And then, you know, if we got to that system where we're not running for numbered seat numbers, I was trying to look this up because I did it a while ago. And I think that that requires a referendum that would have to go out to the general electorate to change that configuration. No, that's something we could do by board resolution?
We got an opinion from our attorney today that the board could make that decision. The school board could make that decision to go to a full at-large as opposed to what we call an alley, we're called an alley system.
So it's not a legislative change, it's a board vote? But it's not a legislative change?
It's not a legislative change. That's, that's the legal interpretation.
I see. Well, I, I actually think that, that that change of having all of our seats go to at-large, not numbered, then I think it becomes pretty intuitive for people to vote in an election. And it's not confusing if there's nine candidates for three seats. You pick the three you want. And it's not really, and then you, you also completely avoid any potential gamesmanship about people registering in the last hour of the registration period for essentially selecting which person they want to run against or something. Because that, that's not really in the best interest of the voters or certainly not in the best interest of the long-term state of Rochester Public Schools. So I think that is a change that makes a ton of sense, would save money and be more intuitive to the electorate. So I would support moving ahead on that and community input.
Are you, are you saying that that would be a conversation you'd want to have for 2024 elections?
Yes, I would like to, I, I would be supportive of making a decision on that by April 15th, if that's the same deadline for going to an at-large system.
I think it's the same, yeah, it has to be the same deadline.
And I guess just to complete my jumbled thoughts, the concerns about any particular issue turning into a political football or an issue in the campaign, I don't think is unique to this issue. Every issue has the potential to become some sort of a political, whatever. I mean, it's just kind of the reality. So I, I don't think this one stands apart in any special way.
Director Marvin?
Yeah, so I have a question. I know, Kathy, you've done a lot of research on this. Do we have any information about the however hundred and some, more than hundreds of some school districts that do have or don't have a primary as to what kind of a system they use in terms of the general election? Do they elect all, all of their candidates at-large? You know, so you've got three seats, you pick your three. You've got four seats, you pick your four, and you're done? I mean, I think we're the only ones or one of very few school districts that still have that alley system.
I would say, I didn't look at all the districts, but I did look at the elections that were from 2023. And only one had a primary, and that was Duluth. They have seats. And then Anoka has seats. But St. Paul, Rosemont, Bloomington, Roseville, St. Paul, South Washington County, Adina, Minnetoka, St. Louis Park is all elect three or elect four. And in all of those cases, there were, the most amount of candidates were in Rosemont, who had 12 candidates for four seats. So if you did an alley, three per seat. South Washington County had 11 for three seats. And everyone else had about seven or six for three or four seats. So it's not like you're opening it up for 25 people to vote. It seems to be controlled.
To, to build on what Director Cook just said too. I mean, there have been elections where I, I have said to myself, I really like this candidate, and I really like this candidate, and they're running against each other. So I, you know, as opposed to another seat where it was, it was clear to me, you know, which candidate I might prefer. So this would give the electorate to say, okay, so instead of having Dawn and Karen and Jess all running for the same seat, you know, we pick from the at-large.
Director Marvin?
Well, I'm wondering if an idea might be to put the entire discussion on hold until the beginning of 2025. Because if we do address the idea, which I, I couldn't agree more, that having this seat system is kind of counterintuitive. We wouldn't need the discussion about primaries. But I, I'm wondering if it would be better timing if we just hold off to making any decision until beginning of next year and then have the bigger discussion about how we would recommend doing school board elections and then getting that out to the community, that recommendation.
Can I hear what you're saying, Dr. Marvin? But I almost hear that there's consensus about going the direction that Director Cook is talking.
I was going to ask you, what, what's your rationale for waiting until 2024? I want to hear what Director McLaughlin just said.
Answer that question because we're just like talking. And it, it's either that we need more time because there's clearly something happening or we need to just go. So continue, sorry.
No, that was, that was the end of, that, you know, is there consensus here to? I'm not sure anybody to decide like this minute. But do we want to have a little bit of time to think about what Director Cook was proposing? Is getting rid of the alleys and having a, what the alternative is?
Changing the structure of our seats.
Right, which would be different than what you're asking us right now.
Right.
Right.
But there's no resolution on the floor, so. And it's a study session.
Right, but you're looking for consensus. And I feel like we're going further away from that because now all of us are like, well, what about this? And so to me, that suggests that we're not ready to, to do anything but yes, say we're having an election for these three seats by this time. But I don't know if other people are ready to jump on that first recommendation.
Well, what else would you need to know to have the conversation about changing? Not, but the primary here, changing the structure of our seats. To, what kind of information, what, what other information does, would the board need to have that discussion?
It'd be helpful for me to have the same kind of pros and cons or considerations that you have for the primary versus no primary.
So getting, getting some information from other districts about what it looks like?
I think the same considerations for, to support not having a primary would also apply to going to the everybody at-large. And then we could think of what other possibilities or information would you need as to, you know, what are the benefits? What are, what are maybe some of the drawbacks of actually changing the, the structure of the system?
And I would put on the table in terms of the other benefits. I think the alternative, non-alley, puts us closer to the, the benefits of ranked choice vote, ranked choice voting.
Yeah.
It's a structure that could be used with ranked choice voting.
And my final comment regarding this issue for tonight is I agree with Dr. Marvin's last statement of, we're under no obligation to, it's a great idea. It has generated great input. If anyone wants to know where I ultimately fall on this, I agree completely with Director Cook's suggestion of, you know, all at-large, you know? Bump the primary general just at-large. But, but to do so next year? I mean, there's nothing that, unless there's something that I'm unaware of or haven't heard or went way over my head. Is there something driving this where we need to act upon this or we feel a certain pressure to do something now versus simply, let's put it on our ABCD to be picked up in 2025?
What do, Director Barlow, what do you think the drawbacks are to making this decision before or by April 15th? Director Cook's versus, versus waiting? I mean, because I think there are lots of reasons that we could give to support everybody's at-large. If, you know, four people sign, if four people filed to, to vote or to, to run and it's a four-seat year, then those four are going to win. If it's, you know, 25, then it's, it's 25. But I think we could make the rationale that it's, that is also easier for the public to understand than what we currently have, which is kind of a mess in terms of comprehending the idea. I mean, we, we get it, we get, we get it because we were in it, in that structure. But for somebody who doesn't pay a whole lot of attention to, like, wait a minute. I get that, I mean, we get that every year. Wait a minute, can you, what? What is this?
Right, so even though I said my last comment would be my final comment.
I knew it wouldn't be.
Since he goaded me into a. Well, if Director Cook's suggestion is now the recommendation, then there's only, in my estimation, to wait. But that isn't the initial resolution.
Well, we don't have a resolution, do we?
Well, okay.
Yes, there are recommendations.
Recommendation. Recommendation.
Which can always be modified.
And I guess, I take, I take Dr. Barlow's comment. I think the, the recommendation on the agenda is more complicated than the alternative in a lot of ways.
Oh, to not have the primary but still have the seats?
Right, right. In that what Dr. Cook, I mean, obviously it's not his idea that we've all probably thought about this, but I think that's a simpler decision than the primary or no primary, at least in my mind it is.
Yeah.
Well, we could go to all at-large seats and still have a primary. That's an option too. And that, and that sort of a structure, then.
You'd pick six.
Right. Then, then the, the top six vote-getters make it.
It's a narrow down, it's a narrow down.
Right. I, I actually think it, there's much less compelling rationale for a primary when all the seats are at-large anyway, but it is possible. I mean, that is allowed.
And I'd like to know more about how this, around the state does that, if, if there's a combination.
Yeah, we're talking, I think, three different things right now. I'll just come back. We are already into the political season. I'm guessing any money, there are people out there who have already decided they're going to run for school board and which seat they're going to file for. I think the timing of making a decision right now is not ideal. So I would really like to have a really informed, really important conversation in beginning of 2025 about how to move forward. I just think the timing of this right now is not smart.
So are we looking for consensus? What point are we making, looking for consensus on?
So right now, as I see the questions on the floor is move forward with a conversation about not holding a primary in 2024, to delay any conversation about changes in our election cycle to 2025, which could include either or both, not having a primary and/or in combination changing the structure of our seats, or in the timeframe between now and April, having a conversation about perhaps changing the structure of our seats, which could have an impact on whether or not we have a primary. So Plan A, modified Plan A is to add the conversation about the seats before April or delay everything to include a conversation about the seats to 2025.
That's Plan B.
Right now I'm hearing two delays to 2025, whatever the conversation is. I'm hearing a.
I'm ready to go.
I'm ready to go.
I am.
So we don't have a consensus?
Well, I think I get the feeling from the three of you that you would rather not have to participate in making this decision at this point.
I'm not running, so I can make the decision. I'm fine to go right now or wait until 2025. I think both have good merits. So I'm kind of a swing in that.
I'm putting in the middle.
I don't care what we do at this point. Just make a decision.
And I'm not, I've, have, I've ran three times, okay, have been elected twice. The process works, okay? And if we're looking for consensus to move this forward and to then go home, yes, I, let's move it forward.
For this year?
Hmm?
For this year?
Yeah, move it forward, yes.
So move it to 2025 or move it to.
The, whatever A was, yeah.
To not have a, to.
Do it now.
Do it now.
To not have a primary in 2024 to include the discussion about our structure of our seats?
I mean, I think at this point, we're just trying to decide on whether we want to engage in a decision-making process, right?
We're not making a decision on what we're deciding. We're deciding what the next conversation is going to be.
You can always vote nay.
My perspective is we're going to, if we're going to have a vote on this, I think we should have a vote on this on all topics, the primary and the structure.
And when?
I would favor sooner rather than later if I had to decide right now, but because it's all kind of new, I haven't put a whole lot of thought into it.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I understand it why it's, it's new for our newer board members.
Well, even knew that we didn't have the alternative until tonight.
Oh, right, right, right. But I mean, this has been something that's come up on the sidelines for at least the last five or six cycles of elections, should we change or not, not change. We've gotten quite a bit of direction from one of our legislators who would have liked to have seen something that's even more complicated maybe than what we have right now and told us, you can't decide, the legislature has to make this decision for you, which meant, okay, well, that's really getting into some complicated stuff in terms of, of, of having the legislature make the decision. But now it's pretty clear that the legislature does not make the decision, we make the decision.
Director Markman, I just want to clarify what you said. Are you talking about the, the history that as you know it?
Yes.
It's about primary versus no primary or is it about the structure of the seats or both?
It's more, more about the structure.
Okay. I'm sorry for not being clear.
Well, we are under no pressure to make a decision for 2024, except if we're going to make a decision for 2024, it has to be by April 15. So we can make a decision, 2024 is not the year that we want to implement any election change, election system changes. And what I'm hearing now is I've got two board members who would prefer 2025, Jess in the middle, and you said, Director McLaughlin, that you'd rather do it sooner rather than later, but is that just in reference to the 2024 election? Because sooner rather than later affects the election cycle or you'd be okay having a discussion at a later time to apply to a later election?
I would support not waiting until 2025. If, if we're looking at the structure as well, if that's one of the considerations.
The, the seats.
Right.
Versus at-large.
Right. I see value in changing the seats as quickly as we can if we're going to do that.
The structure.
Right.
And I think that would be, it would make it easier for the public. I mean, a question you could put out to the public would be, do you want to continue as we have, which is with a primary and three or four seats are up and you pick the one person you want for each of those seats, understanding that no, you do not have your own district, it's everybody versus going to what Director Cook suggested, which is a structural change. And to me, the structural change makes a lot of sense.
We could have this as a discussion item at a next meeting with additional information about the situation with the seats in other districts and have at that meeting an opportunity for us to decide if we're going to continue the conversation related to 2024 or if we're going to delay it to 2025.
Is this something we could get information from MSBA on as far as like what other district?
Well, it, it's mostly from the Secretary of State's side. They don't, they don't keep a lot of the election result information, like how many candidates that were in the.
Not the results, but information about other districts and how they structure their seats. Is that something that MSBA would have?
They might possibly have, but they wouldn't have the information like how many people ran in each of the seats, whether a primary was needed or not. So, but yeah, we can check.
I guess the question I would have, do they have information on pros and cons of our structure versus the other structure? Or primaries or not primaries? I mean, do they weigh in on any of that?
I don't know that they've taken a position, but since we're one of the few, I mean, we actually have legislation from 1980 that is specific to independent school District 535 that allows us to have the structure. It's not.
The current structure.
Our current structure. And gives us the option to not, to have an at-large structure. So somebody asked a legislator to specifically pass that law in 1980.
So are, are you saying, clarify for me if I'm understanding this correctly, that up until 1980, it was more common, it was common for districts, or the expectation for districts was that everybody was at-large as opposed to an alley system which we had to ask for?
I couldn't tell you about the history before 1980.
No.
Oh.
But I mean, since.
Or what, or why someone asked for that for Rochester. All I know is that that's when the law was passed.
Or how many, how many districts, if any, were actually using an alley system then?
Right.
I mean, that was a while ago.
But we can find that out now. I think the majority of seats are at-large. It's off the top of my head from what I've seen in the data that I've been looking at.
So Sharon Ethan, it seems like you've given you a number of ideas that you've kind of documented that you're going to work with and you're, you're letting us know that at our next meeting, at a meeting, you will present, provide us an opportunity to discuss and further. So you're not really asking us to, at this point, to continue providing input to you or?
Well, we're split on the course of action right now. We don't have a majority of people who want to move it to 2025. We don't have a majority of people who want to make the decision for 2024. So.
But wouldn't that be the decision we, I mean, could that just become the recommendation that we're, whatever you're putting on the next agenda is that, it sounds like we're all wanting to make the same choice. It's just a matter of when that choice, what election or what year that, that is going to take effect.
So.
So we could, obviously, if you're putting on the agenda that it's, we want to do it in 2024, if something happens that we all have decided now, like, let's make it 2025, we can make an amendment to that resolution in the moment.
Well, am I hearing consensus that we all want to move away from the alley system to at-large? Have we, have we.
Yeah, I don't think.
Reached consensus on that?
Do you have, do you have an opinion? We've shared ours.
Waiting to hear, see what the rest of the board members are saying.
I agree with that.
I'm fine with that.
With the alley or the.
With the at-large?
Yes.
I thought that for a long time. However, I still don't feel comfortable with this board making that decision without reaching out to the public. And I may be alone on that. I'm fine. I'm used to.
Even asking the question about the at-large?
Yeah. I mean, if we're going to make any changes, I think, I think we need to get feedback.
I don't disagree with that.
So you have consensus, right, that it sounds like the majority of us are in agreement for the at-large?
Did I hear from Director Markman?
Yeah.
Are you okay with the at-large?
I'm okay with that. We haven't heard from Director McLaughlin.
Well, he's originally.
He suggested.
Maybe you've changed your mind. So are you still supporting this?
Yes.
At-large, okay.
So unanimous consent, I would say.
Then there's a, is there another part in terms of community input or is that separate or, or?
I think that comes at the next meeting, doesn't it?
Okay.
So are board members also in favor of getting community feedback on a change to an at-large system?
I am.
Yes.
Is that what you were saying?
Don't, I, it seems to me we have to, and again, I may be wrong, that we have to vote on that.
Okay.
Or vote that that's what, I mean, right now, we're just having the conversation, but I'm not sure that we would get feedback on this if we haven't voted to do it yet. I mean, if it's not a formal resolution.
No, we're, I think we're reaching consensus that it's something we're exploring and the feedback we want from the community is feedback that we'd take into account when we take our vote.
Okay.
Which would be, I mean.
Which would mean we wouldn't vote next week then.
And we could do a prep for action, right, and then allow some additional time for.
We would take, we, we would have to do it before April 15th because even though Director Cook offered the opportunity that we could have a primary election in an at-large system, we definitely would have to take action to not have a primary and to take action to change the alley to an at-large.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine with having the, the public weigh in, but it, I can't, it's hard for me to imagine that a majority of people would say, let's keep our present system, which confuses everyone, versus changing the structure.
So, and Julie, my point was not, I.
No, right.
I think I agree with you.
And I'm fine if we ask the public that.
And sake of transparency, I think it would be a smart move. So that's.
I, I agree with that. But.
Although we, we wouldn't be doing it in any sort of representative sample way. It would just be whoever decided to answer the survey. So do you want me to come back to the meeting next week with a instrument to get that kind of feedback from the community? Because I doubt we're going to have time to get it out and get results back by the meeting next week. And then information about how other boards do their structure of their at-large versus other seats structure?
So I think we'd appreciate a resolution and the tool that's going to be used for this survey.
Okay.
Kathy, do you feel like you have time to do that?
Yeah.
Do you want any help?
I will reach out if I need it. Does that give you everything you need?
Yes.
I think so. Is the question of 2024 versus 2025 still in the table in anybody's mind?
That sounds like it.
What?
It sounds like it.
It sounds like. Okay.
Well, I think, right, and I think, is that going to be part of the question of when the public thinks this should be implemented? Because it sounds to me right now, what we would be asking in our survey would be, do we want to have an at-large for everybody and you just pick your top three or your top four? Is, is that the question that we're putting to the public or? Is there going to be more than that?
Well, that's what I'm going to bring next week, is the questions that would be on the survey.
Like, should we, I mean, in, in terms of structuring the survey, and I know I'm really getting into the weeds and it's late and I apologize, kind of, to ask the public, do you want to go with an at-large system or keep the current system we have? And if we make a change, do you want to have it changed in 2024 for this election or for the 2026 election? Because I think that's what, what Jean was getting at. That's what you really wanted input on was the 2024 versus 2025?
I, it seems to me that the consensus was that if we're going to do it, we should do it now and not wait. That's what I was hearing.
So you, you're not, you don't want to get feedback from the community as when the implementation would be?
No, I think, personally, I think that's a board decision, not a community decision, that part.
Okay.
Well, it's all a board decision. They have to understand that it's not a vote.
Yeah, okay, I got that. Thank you.
Just in case there's anybody who's actually watching this meeting.
Right. Anything else that we need for me to bring? And of course, there will be an agenda item, so you will be able to submit questions? All right.
Thank you for surfing, surfacing this topic. I think it's, yeah, I didn't even realize it was possible until today to change that structure and I think it's, yeah, it's great. Thanks.
All right. So just to finish up the agenda, we've got our A, B, C, D speaking of, would any, are there any other members, board members, are there any other items a board member would like to bring forward for consideration on the future agenda? Hearing none. Seven, point one, there were no questions submitted with answers before the meeting. Upcoming board meeting dates on February 20th, we have a regular meeting. March 19th, we have a regular meeting. March 26th, we have a study session and April 9th, we have a regular meeting. All those meetings start at 5:30 PM. And hearing no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 8:57 PM.